Call to order. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular board meeting of the Halton Catholic District School Board on Tuesday, June 20th, 2023. Please note that this meeting is being livestreamed and will also be posted on the board's YouTube channel. Before we begin, I just wanted to review a few guidelines and general instructions. In order to be recognized, please use the hands up feature in Teams to be automatically placed in queue. Please remember to turn your desk mics on when you speak. Please silence your cell phones, which will ensure that we are not hearing any feedback. We are hearing feedback and causing interruptions during the meeting. Please remember that if you speak when you are not recognized or when you do not have the flow, your mics will be muted. With that, we move on to item 1.1, Land Acknowledgement, Opening Prayer, Our Father and the National Anthem. I ask staff to close off with the land acknowledgement.
Halton as we know it today.
It's ritual history and modern traditions.
Of many First Nations and the Métis.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
To the Atawandaran.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Métis.
These lands surround me greatly.
Our steeped and indigenous history.
As we gather today on these treaty lands.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our indigenous brothers and sisters.
To honor and respect.
The four directions.
Lands.
Waters.
Plants.
Animals.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
We acknowledge and thank.
The Mrs. Saugas of the Credit First Nation.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Thank you. Superintendent Nahr and Superintendent D'Alfo, would you please lead us in the ear and liturgy?
It's always nice to come together at the end of the school year in prayer, so let us begin in the name of the Father and of the Son and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Almighty, ever-living God, you give us so much for which we are grateful, but so often we forget to be thankful. Help us to live in gratitude and joy, sharing our gifts with others. May all our efforts be pleasing to you, as we hope to share in the building of your kingdom. Through our Lord Jesus Christ, your son who lives and reigns with you, in the unity of the Holy Spirit, God forever and ever. Amen. A reading from the Second Letter of Paul to the Corinthians. We want you to know, brothers and sisters, about the grace of God that has been granted to the churches of Macedonia. For during a severe ordeal of affliction, their abundant joy and their extreme poverty had overflowed in a wealth of generosity of their part. For as I can testify, they voluntarily gave according to their needs, and even beyond their needs, begging us earnestly for the privilege of sharing this ministry to the saints. And this not merely as we expected. They gave themselves first to the Lord and by the will of God to us, so that we may urge Titus that. As we had already made in the beginning, so he should also complete this generous undertaking among you. Now as you excel in everything, in faith and speech and knowledge and utmost eagerness and in our love for you, so we want you to excel also in this generous undertaking. I do not say this as a command, but I am testing the genuineness of your love against the earnestness of others. For you know the generous act of our Lord Jesus Christ, that though he was rich, yet for your sakes he became poor, so that by his poverty you might become rich. The word of the Lord. The response to the psalm is, "Praise the Lord, my soul."
Praise the Lord, my soul.
Praise the Lord, oh my soul. I will praise the Lord as long as I live. I will sing praises to my Lord all my life long. Praise the Lord, my soul. Happy are those who help, is the God of Jacob, whose hope is in the Lord their God, who made heaven and earth, the sea, and all that is in them. Praise the Lord, my soul. It is the Lord who keeps faith forever, who executes justice for the oppressed, who gives food to the hungry, the Lord sets the prisoners free. Praise the Lord, my soul. The Lord opens the eyes of the blind. The Lord lifts up those who are bowed down. The Lord watches over the strangers, he upholds the orphan and the widow.
Praise the Lord, my soul.
Alleluia, alleluia. I give you a new commandment: Love one another as I have loved you. Alleluia, alleluia. A reading from the Holy Gospel according to Matthew. Glory to him. Jesus said to his disciples, "You have heard that it was said, 'You shall love your neighbor and hate your enemy.' But I say to you, love your enemies and pray for those who persecute you, so that you may be children of your Father in heaven; for he makes his son rise on the evil and on the good, and sends rain on the righteous and on the unrighteous. For if you love those who love you, what reward do you have? Do not even the tax collectors do the same? And if you greet only your brothers and sisters, what more are you doing than others? Do not even the Gentiles do the same? Be perfect therefore, as your heavenly Father is perfect." The Gospel of the Lord. In reflecting on today's gospel, the thought of "be perfect" is almost unimaginable. Praying for my enemy, often difficult to do. How can we possibly live up to Jesus' directive? The point that Jesus is making is that we are all in control of how we respond to those around us in the world. While you or I will never be perfect, we continually can ask for God's help, God's infinite love and mercy to help us to be better, to be more like God, and to feel the power of his love. We can do this by examining our own attitudes to those we consider enemies or adversaries, and to extend love and forgiveness to them. God's will is nothing less than that we become like him. The love that Jesus speaks here in the gospel today is agape, the love that seeks and works to meet another's highest welfare. God calls us to grow in love, show compassion, kindness, and forgiveness to others, even and maybe most especially when it's difficult. And in doing so, we can experience the transformative power of God's love and the nature of his kingdom. The response to the petitions is, "Lord, hear our prayer." For the Church, call to share and celebrate the boundless generosity of God, we pray to the Lord. For peace between nations, that all countries may have the desire and the will to work together for peace, justice, stability, and prosperity, we pray to the Lord. For our country, that our gratitude for what we have may be shared in welcome and compassion for others, we pray to the Lord. That every child and adult in our Halton Catholic District School Board family may be celebrated unconditionally and supported to be all that they can be, we pray to the Lord. That in this month of the Sacred Heart, we may model evermore fully God's love for all of us, we pray to the Lord. For constant openness to the Holy Spirit, that we may work towards the perfection to what Jesus calls us to do, we pray to the Lord. For a safe summer and a refreshing break from our work, with opportunities to renew ourselves with you and to grow in our understanding of our work for the kingdom, we pray to the Lord. For all those who have died, especially those dear to us, that their journey has ended in the loving arms of God, and for those who grieve, that they may find hope and comfort in the resurrection, pray to the Lord. For our own needs and the intentions that we hold in our hearts. We pray to the Lord. Lord, hear our prayer. Gathering all of our prayers into one, may we have the courage to pray as Jesus taught us. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this daily our prayer and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Teach me gratitude. Holy Spirit, open my heart to understand how precious I am to you, how loved I am by you. Open the eyes of my soul to see the gifts you have put before me this day. Give me the grace to recognize each encounter with you. Teach me to respond in gratitude, to grow in gratitude, to teach me to be generous as you are generous with me, and to collaborate with you in serving my sister and my brother for the greater glory. Please join me in our closing prayer. Creator God, we thank you for your great love and work in our lives. We thank that you and we hope for even the most difficult of times and the strength to face challenges which sometimes feel insurmountable. Help us to cultivate an attitude of constant thanksgiving for all your gifts to us and an openness to see and know that you are accompanying us every step of the way, through our Lord Jesus Christ, who with you and the Holy Spirit lives and reigns one God forever and ever. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Go in peace, love, and serve each other.
Thank you Superintendent D'Alfo and Superintendent Nahr for this beautiful liturgy. I now ask staff to please play the national anthem. Thank you. Item 1.2, motions arising from in-camera. There was one motion arising from the special in-camera session that will require a vote in the public session. I will now read the motion. It's titled Personnel Matter One from the Special In-Camera Session. I'll read the motion. Resolve that the Halton Catholic District School Board adopt the Special In-Camera Board Meeting Personnel Matter One. May I have a mover for that item? Mubet Trustee Powell, looking for a second, please. Trustee Murphy, you see that? Oh, Trustee Agnew, sorry. There will be no discussion on the motion as she will take it to a recorded vote. This is Personnel Matter One. Trustee Carabella.
Opposed.
Trustee Powell.
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy.
Opposed.
Trustee Ohan Chanada.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
Opposed.
Trustee Saunders.
Opposed.
Trustee Kelly. Trustee Chua.
We weren't here for the...
Oh, sorry. And Trustee Duarte is opposed. There's four in favor, five opposed. The motion fails. We shall now move on to the next item, which is called Personnel Matter Two. Can I have the motion? Oh, yeah. Thank you. May I have a mover for this motion? Personnel Matter Two. This is from the regular in-camera meeting. Trustee Agnew, looking for a second. Carabella. There will be no discussion on this item. I shall take it to a recorded vote. Trustee Powell. This is the regular in-camera item, Personnel Matter. Yep. When everybody left. So, Trustee Personnel Matter Two. I don't forget, it's only...
Yes, in favor.
So, Trustee Powell, in favor. Trustee Kennedy.
In favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanada.
I'm in favor.
Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Saunders.
Favor.
Trustee Kelly.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Duarte is in favor. We have nine in favor, none opposed, no abstention. Personnel Matter Two carries. We shall now move on to the next in-camera item. Can we have the motion up there, please? This item was an appeal to the declined delegation from the regular in-camera session. I'll read the motion. Resolve that a decision of the Director of Education and the Chair of the Board of Trustees to decline the delegation entitled parental rights and library selection policy due to receiving the complete script past the deadline of 1:00 PM as specified in Policy I-06 be overturned by the HCSB Board of Trustees. Further appeal in the delegation after suitable content review be allowed as per Policy I-06. Can we see the motion up there? May I have a mover? Trustee Carabella, you've got to move it. Secondary. Trustee Saunders, I didn't send out there. So, if you're in favor, you're in favor of the appeal. If you're opposed, you're opposed to the appeal, okay? There shall be no discussion here. So, I'll take it to a recorded vote. Trustee Ohan Chanada.
Opposed.
Trustee Agnew. Okay. This is the item here, okay? Yeah, this is Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Saunders.
Favor.
Trustee Kelly.
Oppose.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Powell.
Opposed.
Trustee Kennedy.
Favor.
Trustee Agnew.
Opposed.
And Trustee Duarte is opposed. Trustee Chua.
Um, abstain.
Trustee Bowie.
Abstain.
Trustee Kuzma.
Abstain.
So, we have four in favor, five opposed. The appeal fails. We shall now move on to our next order of business is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Do trustees want to move any items from the consent agenda? Seeing none? Oh. Oh, I see a couple of hands up. Trustee Kennedy, you have your hand up.
I'd like to remove from the consent agenda item 6.2.1.
Hold on one second. Can we have the agenda on the board, please? 6.2.1. Did I hear you correctly, Trustee Kennedy?
Pardon me?
It is summary of outstanding items, 6.2.1?
Correct.
Okay. I see another hand up. Trustee Carabella.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to take out 6.1.1. It's minutes of the June 6th meeting, public meeting, regular board meeting.
Okay.
And 6.1.3.2, the psychoeducation psychological assessment of individual students' policy.
Okay.
And 6.1.3.3, the selection of learning and library materials policy. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Any other amendments to the agenda? Seeing none? Maybe may I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Trustee Carabella. Looking for a second, please. Trustee Murphy, can I have the motion up there, please? Okay, that's fine. I'll read the motion once again. Resolve that the Halton Catholic District School Board approve consent agenda items, all consent agenda items except 6.1.1, 6.1.3.2, 6.1.3.3, and noted items 6.2.1. It is moved by Trustee Carabella, seconded by Trustee Murphy. I shall take it to a recorded vote. Trustee Agnew.
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Saunders.
In favor.
Trustee Kelly.
Opposed.
Trustee Chua.
Um, abstain.
Trustee Bowie.
In favor.
Trustee Kuzma.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Powell.
Opposed.
Trustee Kennedy.
In favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanada.
In favor.
We have five in favor, three opposed. Motion carries, the agenda is approved. We shall remove these, remove these four items out of the agenda as we get there.
Point of privilege, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Trustee Carabella.
Can you say where those items will be?
So, item 6.1.1 will be under the approval of the minutes 7.1. 6.1.3.2 will be action items 9.5. 6.1.3.3 will be action item 9.6. And 6.2.1 will be business arising from previous meetings 8.1. Thank you. Is that good? Okay. We shall now move on to next order of business, which is the approval of the minutes 7.1, which was 6.1.1. Minutes of the June 6th regular board meeting is in your package. Are there any additions, errors, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Trustee Carabella, you have requested this item to be...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Oh, I'm not unders... Wait, aren't we doing the... Did we do all the... Don't we do the vote on the consent agenda items? Okay, thank you.
Trustee Carabella, I will do that first and come here, sorry. It is organized today, sorry. Point of order, Mr. Chair. Yeah, give me a second.
Yeah, not to worry.
I'm coming back to your point of order. So, we voted on the consent agenda, did we not? We did, Trustee Carabella.
Mr. Chair, we voted on the approval of the agenda.
Uh, that was the beginning, right?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We voted, it's the consent, we did that.
And we just did the consent.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we just did, yeah. So, we are back to items 7.1, approval of the minutes, which was 6.1.1 in the consent agenda. The minutes of the June 6th, 2023, regular board meetings in a package. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to those minutes? Trustee Carabella.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I would like to question number 14. I, the open question period, I did mention, I did bring this up last time as well, that I'm not understanding why there was not a response now. That's two board meetings for the previous question, and the question that was asked previous on June 6th is not reflected here, and neither is the answer, so I'm wondering what the status is and why is there a delay. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. I think a response was given to the open question, open questionnaire. Question answer was provided to the Director of Client, can you correct me?
Chair, yes, there was. It was sent out.
Trustee Carabella.
Follow up then, our, our open question period, 13.5, it says there that the copies of any written response to a question will be provided to trustees and added to the minutes of a subsequent meeting. So then, we could do that next.
Thank you. Director of Client, when was the response provided?
I think it was last week, I believe. Yeah. So, we could add to the next, I think, the minutes for this, right?
Thank you.
That was our discussion, was what minutes are we talking about, subsequent minutes, so we could do that.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. So, are there any further errors, additions, or deletions, or corrections? Seeing none, may I have a mover for the approval, approving the minutes of June 6th? Looking for a mover, please. I need somebody to move that.
I'll move it.
Trustee Ohan Chanada moves, looking for a second. Seconded by Trustee Agnew, I'll take it to a recorded vote. Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Saunders.
In favor.
Trustee Kelly. Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Powell.
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy.
In favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanada.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew. Trustee Chua.
In favor.
Trustee Bowie.
In favor.
Trustee Kuzma.
In favor.
So, we have eight in favor, none opposed, no abstention, motion carries. We shall now move on to consent agenda. Point of order, Mr. Chair. Sorry, Trustee Saunders, I missed your point of order last time. Can you state your point of order?
Yeah, the declaration of conflict...
Yeah, the declaration of conflict of interest, do we do that?
Yes. We are going to come to that. No, we are just finishing the minutes first, we'll come to that. We shall now move on to.
Point of privilege, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry, I'm just looking at our agenda and we we missed the presentations. And and I think.
Oh, sorry, trustee Carabella, I missed a whole page over here, my mistake. Um, give me a second, please stand at ease, trustees, I will state this out, give me a second, my mistake, my apologies. So trustees, I missed a whole page here of my, the agenda. Uh, we have to go back to item number three. Order of business number three, declarations of conflict of interest. Are there conflict of interest to be declared today?
Yeah, declare conflict of interest on the salaries component of the budget discussion.
So trustee Saunders declares a conflict of interest. Anyone else want to declare a conflict of interest? Seeing none? There, so the budget is going to be presented in two parts. One is salaries and one is the rest of the budget. Okay, so we'll be voting on two, two parts. So you, when you declare a conflict of interest, you're declaring conflict of interest on salaries only. Okay. Any other further conflict of interest to be declared, to be declared?
I would like to declare the same conflict of interest.
So trustee Kelly, on salaries only. Thank you. We shall now move on to the next order of business, which is presentation. Senior staff updates, director Klein, please introduce the presentation.
Thank you, Chair. We have superintendent Merrick will give us a brief but beautiful report. So I'll turn it over to superintendent Merrick. Thanks, Director Klein. Uh, so back in early June, the twenty twenty-three Sustainable Schools Report was released. Uh, and it evaluates the boards or all the school boards in Ontario's energy performance. Uh, and it does some minor corrections for weather climate based on where the boards are are related in Ontario. Uh, and Holden Catholic finished third out of the seventy-two boards across the province. Uh, we were the lowest, uh, or the highest ranked, lowest number in the in the GTA. Uh, a couple of the northern boards beat us out based on the weather adjustment. But, uh, we had the lowest energy intensity of any board in the province. Um, it's pretty, pretty major achievement for the board, um, not just in terms of being a sustainability leader, uh, and being very environmentally responsible. But it also reduces our utility costs and allows us to invest those funds in other areas of the board. So I'm pretty proud of the achievement and a great achievement by, you know, students, staff, uh, and everyone across the board.
Thank you, Superintendent Merrick, for your presentations, really appreciated. Uh, it's great that we are the third board out of seventy-two school boards in Ontario. And keep up the good work, you and your team, thank you so much. Our next order of business was delegations and I'm going back. Trustee Carabella, sorry, you have your hand up?
I do, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the presentation. And I was just wondering, do you, uh, is there a venue where you can teach your strategies to other boards of what you've done and achieved here?
Superintendent Merrick?
Uh, yeah, there is, we have a, there's a couple of forums where we share information across school boards, uh, through our provincial associations. Um, last year we were on the panel, uh, we were second seventy-two last year, so we were on the panel last year. Uh, this year we weren't invited on the panel, but we're, um, we're still definitely known as a sustainability leader across the school board sectors in the province.
Thank you, Superintendent Merrick, trustee Carabella, your follow up? Thank you, Superintendent Merrick, once again. Uh, so our next order of business is delegations. There was one delegation which was declined. Uh, delegation policy I dash O six, which was approved on Feb twenty-first, twenty twenty-three specifies that a detailed script shall be received by the deadline of one point zero zero P M. On a Thursday preceding the board meeting and with no tolerance or discretion from the chair or the director. The deadline for of one point zero zero P M for submissions has been strictly adhered adhered to in the past and no concessions have ever been made. The script, this script was not received by the deadline of one P M last Thursday. And a decision to decline the delegation was made by the director and chair in accordance with policy I dash O six. The decision was appealed and the appeal followed the steps laid down in procedure V I dash one oh five, which has been an in-camera action item. The results of the appeal have been announced in the public session of the board meeting and there will be no further discussion on this item. We went to the consent agenda and we decided, uh, six point one point one, six point one point three point two, six point one point three point three. And six point two point one would be removed from that. We voted on this item already, trustees. And now we shall, we have gone to approval of the minutes, six point one point one. And now we shall deal with the next item, the noted item. Next order of business is the business arising from previous meetings. Eight point one, which was six point two point one in the consent agenda summary of outstanding items. Trustee Kennedy, you asked to pull this item out, you're the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just have a question about, um, the June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one date of the board meeting, there was an agenda in the equity audit, though reading it all. But just that we're at two years into this now. And I'm wondering when it's expected that we will have the equity audit.
Director Klein, could you provide an update on this?
Thank you, I'll turn to, uh, to, um, Ms. Jai Ramen, but we'd be looking at the end of the month. Sorry, I'm thinking of the equity audit, sorry, Sita.
So, uh, thank you for the question and through you. So the equity audit is, um, still in, uh, process and, um, we are, uh, it's in its final stages of being finalized.
Trustee Kennedy?
We would expect that when?
Ms. Jaram?
I'm going to confer with Director Klein, maybe by the end of this year?
Yeah, I think we need to, to, um, delve in the eighth then, so we don't have a clear answer right now.
Thank you, uh, trustee Kennedy, we shall move on. Oh, you, you have a follow up, it's only follow up on the status of the item, that's it. Any questions will be considered, gentlemen, go ahead.
Just wondering, who who are we working with, um, on the legal side for the equity audit?
Actually, trustee Kennedy, uh, you're going to talk about the status of that. That's all we can talk about this project, we're not getting discussion, debate, who we are using and all this stuff.
It's not a debate, I'm just curious.
Okay, uh, director Klein?
We're working with Koski Winski.
Which is budget date, do we have an estimate of how much in legal fees we are, we have expensed on this?
Again, that's, uh, do we have a status on the fees that we?
Wouldn't have that at a fingertip right now, okay, status.
Okay, we can get into discussion there. Thank you, trustee Kennedy. With that, I have stated out my agenda out here. And we shall move on to our next order of business, which is action items. We have a couple of action items tonight. And before we dive into these items, I'd like to review the rules for all the action items so that we are on the same page. The person who's presenting, the trustee who's presenting the action item will have five minutes to open up discussion. Uh, and then, um, each trustee will have three minutes for clarifying questions. There'll be no debate at that point in time, no motions, no amendments. And then, uh, we shall have three minutes for debate and then the trustee who's presenting will get to close the discussion in their three minutes for that. The first item, nine point one, grants for student needs. This was a notice of motion at the June sixth, twenty twenty-three regular board meeting. Trustee Ohan Chanara, can you please read the motion?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Whereas the Holden Catholic District School Board continues to rank as the lowest G S N funded board in Ontario. Whereas the understanding of the reasoning for this ranking is not completely understood. Be it resolved that the Holden Catholic District School Board of Trustees write a letter to the Minister of Education signed by the Chair of the Board. This letter would request a detailed explanation of G S N funding rationale that consistently places H C D S B as the lowest funded board in the province of Ontario. And this letter will be sent out not later than June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanara. Uh, the motion is in order, I will place it on the table, I'll ask for a mover before I do that. May I have a mover? Trustee Ohan Chanara moves, looking for a second, please. Seconded by trustee Agnew. Trustee Ohan Chanara, uh, you have the floor to open up discussion.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair and fellow trustees. Um, so I've been a trustee, this is my fifth year term. And and really, for over the five years, we've always been the lowest ranked board. But I've never really absorbed an explanation as to why we are the lowest ranking. So I think it's time that we at least try to put some effort forward and and write a letter to the Minister of Education, asking for a little more detail as to why we are the lowest funded board, um, in Ontario. Um, and as well, I'd like to have in that letter, um, ask us why we don't have a math facilitator. We're one of, I believe, two boards that we're not given funding for a math facilitator when we, we rent very high in math in our board. So, so my thought would be, we create a draft, we'd send it through all the trustees, make sure we're all appeased with it and get it out of here by June twenty-seventh. And hopefully get a response from the Minister of Education. If we receive a response at that time, and I don't have a lawyer present, but if it's not to our liking, we can always put another motion forward to write another letter for more details if it doesn't explain what we needed to explain. So pretty much that's what my motion is out there for. Um, looking forward to any questions or concerns anyone might have.
Uh, trustee Ohan Chanara, you talked about math, uh, math, the lead, did I hear you say that?
Well, it would be in the explanation of G S N funding, but I just wanted to represent it in that draft letter. I would like to maybe just add that line and make sure we're incorporating, you know, special education or whatever other departments are in there.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanara. With that, I shall open up, open up the floor to trustees for questions. And you have, uh, you have three minutes, trustees, uh, on the speaker list, we have, uh, trustee Agnew, you're the floor.
Uh, thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. So just a question about the date, just being cognizant of the ability to, uh, create the content, have it reviewed and then sent out by the twenty-seventh. Is that feasible? Um, just wanted to make sure that we're setting a realistic target. Uh, I'll be fully supporting the motion, but just want to make sure the timing works out.
So my thought process, we would have a draft out before, within twenty, twenty-four to forty-eight hours maximum. If we can get it out by twenty-four to forty-eight hours, we should have time to, uh, agree on a draft and get it out there. So I do, I do think it's reasonable.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
And so who will be crafting that letter?
So I will draft that letter and then I will have, as Chair who represents us, will sign the letter and I'll send it out via email to the rest of our trustees.
I think Communications too has a big part in this, it'll be floated through Communications too.
I was just asking about timelines.
Yep. Uh, and my intention is that trustees get twenty-four hour window to take a look at it and provide any feedback. Trustee Ohan Chanara, you okay with that?
Well, like I previously said, we'll have it drafted within twenty-four and forty-eight hours. I'll vet it through the appropriate departments as they see fit when I get that draft together. If I'm feeling not very confident, this women might get, probably hundred percent, will get a copy of that to help us draft it.
Thank you. Next up is trustee Carabella, you're the floor.
No, that's from before, I'm sorry.
Okay. No other hands up? Trustee Bowie, you have your hand up, you're the floor.
Sorry, mine wasn't working virtually. Um, I just have a question in regards to the motion, uh, maybe, I don't want to speak for you, but to the superintendent, to superintendent Lawf's. But, um, is this correct that we haven't been provided a rationale for, uh, being the lowest funded board?
Superintendent Lawf?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have how each area of the G S Ns are calculated. We just don't have some of the parameters behind the scenes which we don't see.
Thank you, Superintendent Lawf, trustee Bowie, you have a follow up? No? Thank you, trustees, we do not, uh, have any other hands up, trustee Kennedy, yours.
Question, through you, Mr. Chair, Superintendent Lawf. If we, if we get student, uh, school generated funds of a sizable amount and that money went to, say, technology improvements. Would that mean, like, could, is it that, is it, is it possible that parents and students can raise money for for school generated funds? And that can be used to offset costs? Could that be a reason why we might get less if we have had higher, um, student generated funds in the past than other boards?
Superintendent Lawf?
Mr. Chair, uh, no. Um, it's actually, school generated funds is independent of the G S N calculation. It has no bearing on the calculations for the G S Ns.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy. Next question, you have three minutes for questions.
Yeah, no, it has no bearing, so we would still get the same G S N. But if we did, if schools in Holden did raise significant funds, the G S N could be used for other things.
Superintendent Lawf?
Um, I think the question was more on the G S Ns and why we're the lowest funded board in the province relating to G S Ns. And I believe the question was, would that impact our G S Ns? Obviously, if we do receive more in school generated funds, yes, it can mitigate some of that, but that's not a reason why we're the lowest funded board in the province.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy. Trustee Kennedy? Okay, thank you. We do not have any other speakers there, so I shall now open up the floor for debate. We are going to debate three minutes, you have three minutes to debate trustee Ohan Chanara's motion. Trustees, do we have? Do you want to debate? Seeing none? I shall ask trustee Ohan Chanara to close the discussion on your motion.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. And even some of the questions this evening just kind of vets and underlines the reason why we need to send this communication to the individual that holds our purse string. So I'd like to find out why we're the lowest board in Ontario. So thank you, I hope we can all support this and I'll do my best to get it done quickly.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanara. With that, I shall call the vote. Trustees Saunders, favor. Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Chua?
In favor.
Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Kuzma?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanara?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
Favor.
Trustee Murphy?
Favor.
So with that, we have eight in favor, none opposed, no abstention, motion carries. Shall now move on to item nine point two, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget estimates final. Superintendent Lawf, could you please present the budget estimates for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four? And I will read the motion after that, thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair, actually, uh, our senior manager of financial services, Adam Cross, and I will have a presentation to outline some of the changes from our last presentation a couple of weeks or so ago on the sixth of June. Um, as Adam puts it up, really, there hasn't been too many changes per se. Uh, a few exchanges or changes maybe to, uh, the classroom teachers line where we made some adjustments on that line. Uh, as well as, um, on the P D line. So we'll be going through all those changes, uh, once the, uh, once the presentation is up on our screen. So everyone, I think we have it up on the screen now. So you can see our adjusted revenues really hasn't changed much since our last time we were here. Uh, the only change was about fifty-five thousand, so relating to, and really this is all primarily relating to a transportation, uh, grant. We had another adjustment to make for it, so. Okay, the expenditure, the one, I'm going to hand it over to Adam, he's kind of going to go through, uh, some of these items here on our expense side. Again, the majority, the biggest one is on the classroom teacher line.
Thank you, Aaron, and through you, Mr. Chair, to the board of trustees. As Aaron kind of alluded to there, the largest increase from, uh, the draft budget that you saw on June sixth, that relates to the classroom teachers line. So we've increased classroom teacher, uh, expenses by two million. That equates to twenty additional F T E being added to the budget from, uh, from June sixth to to now. In terms of the other changes, so we reduced, uh, E C Es by just under four hundred thousand, uh, to be in line with our projections for the number of F T. Or the number of full day kindergarten classrooms for the upcoming year. In terms of textbooks and classroom supplies, this has decreased by eight hundred and fifty thousand. A large portion of that is just a reallocation of some of the indigenous funding, additional indigenous funding that we received, uh, this year. the indigenous funding, additional indigenous funding that we received this year. And we're applying that to cover the cost of indigenous teachers. Since we received that additional funding, thus reducing the placeholder that we had in classroom supplies related to indigenous education. We've also had a reduction in special education, primarily around third-party psych assessments. We've increased the number of FTE internally for, for psychologists and thus reduced the need for third-party contracted services. The last kind of smaller adjustment in this line is a decrease in the family schools contingency fund. So this fund is used to support schools that potentially have one-time asks throughout the year that they don't have funding for. There's a small decrease to computers. Essentially, it's the cost of two, two computers being adjusted on that line. And then for professional, paraprofessional, and technical, the decrease there is due to a reduction in some material costs based on historical spending. When we did some further analysis there. In terms of our staff development, so there's a decrease of $727,000 when it comes to staff development. A large portion of this was a reallocation of $660,000 to classroom teachers to use some of the de-streaming funding that we're using for dedicated teaching staff, as well as a slight reduction in some other supply teaching costs associated in this line based on some new requests. And then coordinators and consulting, again, a small decrease or increase on this one of $40,000, again relating to de-streaming, and just a reallocation of some of the benefit costs associated with consultants attached to that funding for 2023-2024. And then finally, there's an increase in the provision for contingency of $45,000, and this correlates to the increase in FTE. So the province is making a set aside funds in the provision for contingency for ongoing collective bargaining negotiations. And this is the impact of adding those additional FTE to this budget.
Our financial position for the upcoming year, really nothing has changed, everyone, on this slide relative to our last time we met. So you can see that the 594, what we have in the compliance area of this budget is based on, just like we talked to about last time, a majority of it is based on past capital projects. Really, our operating surplus is still that $63,000 or so at the very top item, top line item. Annual surplus deficit, we just have a, next slide, Adam. The annual surplus deficit, so that's the, sorry, the wording with, represents a surplus deficit, similar to what we talked about last year in your surplus deficit calculation. I actually have a slide here. It kind of came up last time. At least trustee Murphy mentioned it, just how it's calculated and such, and how it differs. So you can see that this is how we get down to our 594 for compliance purposes. Revenue is our $478 million or so. Now we extract, or we remove $10 million for education development charges. That's not really revenue per se to the board, in the sense that we've already incurred the cost for that. We're just recouping some of that expenditure. School-generated funds, as we all know, we don't include school-generated funds to calculate our surplus deficit calculation. It's removed. We, as we know at this time for budget, we ensure that the school-generated funds revenue is equal to the school-generated funds expense. We could theoretically have a dollar in there from a budgetary perspective. We put that in just as a placeholder based on what it looks like. Again, if we don't receive that revenue, it's going to have no impact on our surplus deficit calculation for compliance purposes as we remove that. On the expenditure side, so you can see our expenditure is about $469 million or so. Again, we subtract out the school-generated funds this time. We don't include that. A couple of items there relating to past capital projects. And then asset retirement obligation is also removed. So it doesn't impact the calculation of our surplus deficit for compliance purposes. And the reason being, these are past, sorry, these are our sites that have some form of remediation requirement or to sell it. So this is a new requirement that we have from, not so much from the ministry, but from the accounting standards. And it's now part of our, our financial statement has been removed. So how do we get down to that 594 for compliance purposes? That's how we get down to it. The next couple of slides, everyone, is just from our EFIS submission, confirming that we're compliant in the bag, the Board Administration and Governance Grant. We have that deficit of 594, again relating to past capital projects and amortization on those past capital projects. As we know, we were in a surplus on the operating side of $63 million, or sorry, $63,000 or so. But because we have that, we have that, that compliant deficit, we need to have a recovery plan, which for us is the next slide. And we'll bring it to trustees today as part of the package. That's in, as part of our, our approval of the budget, is how do we remove that 594,000 going forward? For us, we'll just have some review, additional reviews of program delivery and such going forward. And we'll bring it back at revised estimates in December. That concludes our presentation on the changes from our last time we met on June 6th.
Thank you, Superintendent Lawf, and thank you to senior manager Cross for your presentation. Before I read the motion and go forward, as I said before, the motion is being broken up into two parts. The first part is on salaries, and the second part is the rest of the budget. So we shall deal with the first item, which is salaries related first. And trustees, if you have declared a conflict of interest on the first part, you cannot participate in the discussion. Okay? So I'll give you an opportunity for the rest of the budget. So at this point in time, I will read the motion for the first part of the budget. Can we have the motion on the screen, please?
Are we allowed to ask questions about the proposed budget?
So if your questions are related to salaries, we'll take those questions first when you're discussing the salary motions. If your questions are related to the rest of the budget, hold those questions, and we'll talk about it. Okay? Because trustees have declared conflict of interest, we need to demarket that. So the first motion, can you expand it for everybody's benefit, Elizabeth? Thank you. So I shall read the motion. Resolve that the Holden Catholic District School Board approved the 2023-24 salaries and benefits budget estimates in the amount of $368,238,948. May I have a mover for this, please?
I'll move it.
Moved by trustee O'Han Chenara, looking for a seconder. Trustee Powell. So since this is a motion, we shall treat it just like an action item. We'll have a question period, three minutes, and then we shall have, move on to debate for three minutes, and then we shall take a vote. So trustees, I have a speaker's list. Here we have trustee O'Han Chenara, followed by trustee Boye. Trustee O'Han Chenara, you're on the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, to Superintendent Lawf. I just need you to go over again. Sorry. The classroom line, it's an additional 0.85, which is 20 FTE as of from the June 6th, right? Superintendent Lawf?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, that is correct. So it's additional 20 FTE. I believe it was 12 in the secondary panel and eight in the elementary panel. Again, looking at just some of the readjustments, we did some additional adjustments, looking at the changes in some of the enrollment projections and such, and made those adjustments on the secondary panel. On the elementary panels, more due to compliance and industry compliance.
Thank you, trustee O'Han Chenara. You have a next question?
I do have one more question. The second one would be on ECE projections. So reduction of 4.99% over the June 6th? I'm sorry, I need the, why?
Superintendent Lawf?
Sorry.
Adam?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee O'Han Chenara. So when we presented the budget as of June 6th, we had a certain number of ECEs in there with a bit of a contingency. To make room for the additional classroom teachers, we reduced that contingency on the ECE side so that we, we were able to maintain that, that $500,000 compliant budget that you saw on June 6th.
Thank you, trustee O'Han Chenara. Next question?
No, that's good for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is, I thought I saw another hand up there. This is question time for the first motion. Trustees, last chance. Trustee Kennedy, your three minutes starts now. You're on the floor.
It would be partly.
Okay, go ahead. You have your questions next. Next question, please.
You said some questions. You had mentioned, maybe you mentioned, it was, I think, $5 million on June 6th, and now it's 4.36. What happened there?
Superintendent Lawf?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Kennedy. So if you recall back on June 6th, we spoke to a new funding that we were receiving related to de-streaming. What we've done for this budget is we've taken a portion of that funding that we put in as a placeholder under PD and actually applied it to teaching costs rather than PD. So instead of it being supply days, we've reduced the number of supply days and added actual FTE.
Trustee Kennedy?
Let's follow. So we're given the PPF for PD. Is it, it's around $420,000, thereabouts?
Go ahead, Superintendent Lawf.
Through you, Mr. Chair. $420,000 is for all the PPFs. So the number of PPFs of that amount that's currently in the 4.7 or so million, 420,000 of it is from various PPFs that have been earmarked for PD.
So our budget for PD is 4 million, and we're given 420. So our budget's 10 times that amount. Do we know why our number is so high relative to what we're given for PD under PPFs?
Superintendent Lawf? I would necessarily say it's, it's high what we're given for it. I would argue more that that's part of our general budget in general. We have funding within the GSNs that we can allocate for P, for PD as well. So it's not necessarily fully funded from PPF. We don't have PDs from, only from PPFs. We actually, as an organization, use our GSN funding for PD as well.
Trustee Kennedy, go ahead.
Has that been impacted by COVID coming back at all?
Superintendent Lawf?
PD sessions. It was lower.
Yeah, no, it wouldn't necessarily be from, from that. You got to remember too, it could be, it's reallocation too. I think we, we sent it out, trustee Kennedy. It was, we had some money that we moved around as well. So some of it was more, let's say parked, for lack of a better term. And it can be, just like we, we had some funding that we saw, hey, this was in PD before, but we really can use some additional FTE for it. So we moved it out. That does happen. So there is some fluidity to it as to what we can put in, put out of it. Because some of it is, it is open to us, right? Us, I mean, the GSNs are open to the departments to shuffle around. I'm not sure. Superintendent Crowell may have anything else to add to it? I'm not really, no.
So, so just, just this PD point again. So we're, we're budgeting for 4.4 million. You know, we've given 420 for PPF. I know we can use GSN as well. But two years ago, in 2022, it was 1.4 million. So we're going up 2 million. That's a 300% increase. Why, why would it be going up so much with declining enrollment?
Superintendent Lawf?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Kennedy. So a large portion of that 4 million that you're seeing relates to special education. And within special education, a large portion of that amount relates to specialized equipment training. It's enveloped to be spent on PD for that specialized equipment. So really, our usage of it is driven by the number of new devices we're introducing into the system and the number of hours of PD that that requires. We've had a large carryover from previous years related to this line item, so the specialized equipment, which what we do every year as part of the budget is we give SpecEd access to the full amount. And whether they need it, it's there. If they don't need it, it gets rolled over into the next year. So over $1 million that you're seeing in that 4 million is actually rolled over training related to specialized equipment that's been unused for a number of years going back.
And further to add to that, if I could, Mr. Chair. So the period that you're probably comparing it to was a time, how it used to be, how we used to do it was, we'd still keep it as deferred revenue on the balance sheet. But then the thought was, well, we should really show, put all the amounts available to be spent in the account in the current year. And whatever's not spent, as senior manager Cross mentioned, gets moved back to deferred revenue to essentially be rolled back in the next year. So if we don't spend ours, our money for, for special education equipment training, it goes into a deferred revenue account. In turn, it's going to come back into, as part of the budget, the following year. How it used to be done was, we'd only move over a small portion of it based on historical spending. But the thought was to show all that money at least available to their, to the departments. So if they need it, it's there. But if they don't, we just move it into a deferred revenue account.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy.
So how would we reconcile that with the, the PD days that we have up until May, 4,000 days of, say, occasional teachers versus last year, 1,406? I mean, that would probably not be special education, but that's really more than a doubling of, is it, is it teachers coming out of the class and then having occasional teachers jump in? You know, from 1,400 to 4,000, that seems like quite a bit in one year. You're over here.
Superintendent Lawf?
I'm not really sure how to.
I think Director Glenn wants to.
Sorry. Thank you. Thank you, Chair. One of the thoughts, and I guess we could have any of the programming superintendents also help with that, is you were referencing, I think, two years ago, right? Which?
This May.
This May versus last, last May? Well, I know, my train of thought was going back two years. And one of the big changes is the, the style of, the model of PD was not one that could have been done at that period in the sense of we were, we were operating from home. And so to have teachers, for instance, or ECEs, or EAs, or others work together in terms of collaborative professionalism, wasn't as possible. So now that we're in a position where we can physically get together, we would have people more often, more frequently, to a greater degree outside of schools, where they would have ECE or teacher, whoever in there to cover, cover the bases. I'm looking over to Superintendent Crowell or others to see if that's the case. But that would be my, 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 my thought on that.
Certainly. And through you, Mr. Chair. And just, just to be clear, this isn't all money from just one department. It comes from a number of departments. But certainly with the number of curriculum changes that we've seen over the last few years. So you would recall, there's a new math curriculum, new science curriculum. We just got a new language curriculum today with the de-streaming of our grade nine courses, a new grade nine English course curriculum came out today. We're thankful that there has been money provided by the ministry to be able to support teachers learning this new, this significantly new content.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy.
Yes, so like in 2019, when we were getting together before COVID, it was about 1.1 million. It did go down in 2020 to 735, 2021, 1.1, 2022, 1.5. And now we've gone to 4.4. Just seems like quite a significant increase from pre-COVID days, if that was one of the reasons. Let's look at it another way. If we look at the HDSP, they have 67,000 students. Their PD budget estimate for this year is 3.4 million, but an $881 million budget. And ours is 4.4 million with 35,000 students. So, you know, we've got 52% of the students that they do. Not that we have to follow or the other board does, but if you use that, that measure, we would probably around 1.7 million. Yet we're $1 million more than them with half the students. I'm just trying to understand, why would it be so much more here than at another board? In addition to that, they've been lowering their PD over the last few years, where ours has been increasing. I'm just trying to understand.
So trustee.
Do we have less than?
Your time is up. See? I know, I'm just trying to. If I like this one? Okay. So trustee Kennedy, your question, I did not hear. Okay, so trustee Kennedy, your question. I did not hear your question. So get your question.
So my question is again, if you look at it from another angle, we've got a neighboring board here that has a lower PD level that's been going down over two years. Ours has gone up 300% over two years. If we use the ratio of students, ours should be maybe 1.7 if it was the same and we're 4.4. I'm just trying to understand why our number is so much higher than another board that is increasing at the moment, our enrollment's declining.
Okay.
And our number is so much, so much larger.
Thank you. Superintendent Laufs, do you have an answer to that?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have an answer for the public board.
Okay, thank you. With that, trustee Kennedy, you have used more than three minutes of your time. We shall now move on down to the next speaker, Vice Chair Agnew. And give me a second. Do you want to really change the tone here? I am just leaving it at that. You have three minutes, three minutes. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So I just have a question under the department headline. So there is under salaries and wages, there is a significant increase. And I'm just wondering if we could comment on the rationale for that for that increase. It is quite large.
Superintendent Laufs, go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Chair, and and thank you to trustee Agnew. It is actually reclassification. So I'm going to hand it to Adam. Senior Manager Cross.
So through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Agnew. So if you look at the May quarterly report, that's later in the agenda, you'll notice on the department headline, the actual costs are significantly higher than the budget. What we had been doing in the past was we had been including the allowance that department heads are compensated for being a department head in the classroom teacher line as part of just keeping their whole salary in that line. What we've done this year is we were, we've reallocated it, that allowance portion to the department line because that's how it gets processed through payroll. So it's just a reallocation from classroom teachers.
Question?
No, that makes sense. Thank you. So just another question, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, keep going.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna keep going. Okay, so another question is with respect to the library and guidance under salaries and wages. So I do also see, I see a reduction there. And I'm just wondering how that's being obtained? Are we going to actually have schools that are going to be without those positions? Yeah.
Superintendent Laufs?
Thank you through you. And similarly, another relocation. So I'll hand it over to Adam on this one.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Agnew. So kind of the reverse of the last one where we've what we've done is we've realigned some of those costs back into the classroom teacher line to better reflect what those teachers do. So it's not changing the actual guidance counselors. Some employees were coded to guidance, but actually are teachers. And so we've just moved the cost back up into teaching.
Vice Chair, go ahead. Thank you. Up next on the speaker list, trustee Ohan Chanara, I have noted it down as you already asked your questions. Have you done this question? You get three minutes for debate. You can build your question into that. So up next is trustee Saunders. You have the floor and you have three minutes.
Yeah, just sorry, I was I was intrigued by trustee Roberts' questions about PD. I'm just wondering, what are we doing that we would incur such a much higher cost for PD relative to the public board? It just seems that they're way out of whack. Is, I'm just wondering if if through you, Mr. Chair, if Superintendent Laufs has any idea, are we pursuing any special?
Trustee Saunders, my mistake. This is the salary section where you declared a conflict of interest. I would, yes, it's a section where we are talking about salaries and specific to that. So you have to excuse yourself. Okay? I see I see no other hand up here. So I shall now open up debate on this motion that you see on your screen. You have three minutes to debate. And on the speakers list, we have trustee Ohan Chanara. You you're the floor. No questions, debate.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Okay, this is going to be creative. So couple comments. First one is, Superintendent Laufs, through you, Mr. Chair. I'm hearing a lot of reclassing, and and that's normal. I've been through many budget cycles where you have to reclass. You almost have to reclass every month sometimes because of certain things. Do we feel confident that the budget we're putting forward 2023 and 24 have everything where in the buckets they're supposed to be?
So that was your debate?
Question mark.
Okay.
Debate.
Okay, so Superintendent Laufs and your your debate and Superintendent Laufs?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Ohan Chanara. Yeah, we always, when you go through it, you do find these items, right? So for example, the guidance, it's a kind of teachers, a guidance line, a library, things like that. So you're always going to see that influx that first year where it happens. We're going to see the big gap this year, right? Knock on wood. As we're going through, we're kind of doing a little mini conversion right now. So you're kind of finding, looking at the account structure again, saying, does this make sense where we're currently rolling it up into? And that's when we find it. So I say it's 100%. No, I don't think anyone can say with the thousands of accounts we have that it's 100%. But we're definitely trying to improve it as we notice things that don't make sense. Maybe things have changed from when they were set up, could be set up really 20 years ago, right? So things have evolved in that time. So we like to hope we are, or I think we we are, I think we're making improvements for the better. And that's why we made the changes for the allocations.
Thank you. Up next is Vice Chair Agnew. You have three minutes for debate. Okay, thank you. Up next is trustee Murphy. Three minutes for debate.
Debate? Can I say question mark at the end?
Question time is done.
All right. I I mean, I my interest now is piqued by trustee Saunders' question. So I'd like to ask the same thing. Just what is it? What is it exactly about our PD budget that warrants the significantly higher spending than neighboring boards? Chair, thank you, sir.
Question mark. Okay, Superintendent Laufs?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I believe we were talking about Halton District as a term in this board. Right, yeah. Again, I'm not sure what's made up in there to be perfectly blunt. I'm not sure. I know we have one item where we've I'm not going to say it's been inflated, but it has been to a degree because we know we're not going to spend the full amount in SpecEd. But we've added it there so that it's available to to the superintendents and to the departments if it's needed and it's a criteria for that spending. So we could turn around, we could take out million dollars from it and put it back into a deferred revenue because that's historically what's roughly been rolled over at the end of the year. But we didn't, we put it in there. So if you take that off, there's a million dollars right there. I'm not sure if the public, that's what I meant, and I didn't mean to be I guess flippant, or that's the right word to use. But I really don't know what's made up in there, how they classify their SpecEd. We put it in there so that the SpecEd department sees it and has access to it. It is possible they they be in the public board just based on historical trends that they haven't said, hey, look, they're not going to spend all this money. We're going to keep a portion of it in deferred revenue. And if they need it, we can always go back and reallocate it. But yeah, I'm not sure how they how they treat that. And that's what I meant more by it is that I don't know. As Adam mentioned, that's how we did it here. And we used to do it the other way. And that's where you saw that big increase. Where we used to keep it and say, all right, well, SpecEd usually spends such and such dollars each year. So let's just move that much over. Reality was, in my mind, we should give them at least access to it. It doesn't hurt to give them access to it. If they don't use it, it gets deferred anyways to the following year. So that's why we changed that a few years ago. I just don't remember the exact year it changed. It might be when trustee Kennedy was mentioning where it was so much lower. But I really don't have the exact date. I know it was with with Adam and I.
Thank you. No, this is debate time which you used for your question. Sorry. We shall now move on. Next debater, trustee Kennedy, you have the floor. Trustee Boy, you have the floor.
This might not be a question or also a debate that anyone could answer, but like hypothetically, maybe I'll just pose this to the room. Maybe there's a difference between, you know, since we spend more is, actually, no, I do have an actual question. Does staff development include like Faith Day and faith-based retreats and professional development for staff as well? Okay, so hypothetically, that could also impact it.
Thank you. Next up, trustee Kennedy, as you hand up, you have the floor for three minutes of debate.
So, Mr. Chair, is fees and contract services, that's not under this? That's the next category.
Let me check that.
So salaries and wages for board administration, it's up from, you know, about 650,000, about 10%. Is that a reclassification as well versus the year before?
Superintendent Laufs?
Benefits are also up 10.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I'll pass it to to Adam on on that one.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Kennedy. Just so I know exactly which line you're referring to, are you looking at it as the total or are you looking?
Appendix B5, page 87.
Yeah, and just on the board admin.
Salaries and wages. So we have a we have a decrease in teaching, but we have an increase.
That's a clarification you're giving, clarification. I'm being very particular about this. Debate time, question, clarification, end of story. Clarify, you're clarifying the question, right? Okay, go ahead.
Yes. Through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Kennedy. So last year we had a number of vacancies when it came to the budget period for a revised estimates period related to board admin, primarily positions that were approved last June that we didn't fill by December. And then given our financial position, it was decided at that point to postpone those positions a year. So now we're incorporating them into the budget.
Thank you, trustees. With that, I see no other hand up. We have three minutes for questions and three minutes for debate question mark. I shall now call the vote on item 9.2, the first part of it. And the motion is in front of you on the table. Trustee Kelly, how do you vote? Sorry. Okay, yes, you're right. Trustee Chua? Trustee Boy?
In favor.
Trustee Kuzma?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee Paul? Trustee Paul? Favor, okay. Trustee Kennedy?
Opposed.
Trustee Ohan Chanara? Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
Opposed.
Trustee Saunders? Not. Oh, sorry, abstained, sorry. Trustee Duarte is in favor. So we have four in favor, three opposed motion carries. We shall now move on to the second part of the budget motion. Can we see that on the screen, please? I shall now read the motion and we shall follow the same steps for the first part. Resolve that the Halton Catholic District School Board approved the 2023-24 budget estimates excluding salary and benefits in the amount of 101,052,461. May I have a mover? Moved by trustee Paul. Looking for a secondar, please.
I'll second it.
Seconded by trustee Ohan Chanara. So this segment, all trustees can participate and discuss. There's no conflict of interest that I have received. On the speaker's list is trustee Saunders. You have three minutes for question time. So this is question time, three minutes. Start.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I just, I want to ask Superintendent Laufs, so you were mentioning earlier you have deferred revenue. So I'm assuming like on the balance sheet, that's a credit. And then then somehow it becomes a debit because you're including it in an expense. And this is where, how does that happen? Like, I mean, if you're taking a deferred revenue, you're debiting that, you're crediting, like, it would reduce expenses. Can you sort of walk me through how that works?
Superintendent Laufs?
Through you, Mr. Chair. The deferred revenue is sitting on the balance sheet right now. We would debit that and move the in credit to the revenue side to offset that expenditure that's coming through. So it would go into a revenue account. So we would debit the balance sheet, credit the the revenue.
And this is a follow-up. So you said that in that one item before you you were increasing the expense, saying, here's how much you could you could spend. But if you don't, it goes back into deferred revenue. So like, to me, that sounds like it's it's a debit on the balance sheet. Like, it's a it's an increase in the expense. So I'm thinking, how do you do that, just in terms of account?
Superintendent Laufs?
Actually, we're talking budget right now. So the budget, we would just, the availability of the budget is sitting right now. So we would approve that. I think we're mixing up the budget versus the actual. So what would happen was, so once we get our total expenditures for the year, so let's hypothetically say that it's, I don't know, let's say we have $2 million in deferred revenue, and we only spent a million of that, we would then do that, the debit of the deferred revenue and the credit of revenue for current year to offset that expenditure that's in the SpecEd line.
Trustee Saunders?
Okay, I have a follow-up.
Keep asking questions till you finish your three minutes.
Yeah, to Mr. Chair, Superintendent Laufs, you mentioned that you got some additional funding for transportation. I'm wondering if you could give us an idea what that was and and what the impact will be.
Superintendent Laufs?
Yeah, it was $73,000 that was that had to be put. It was a amount that we put for transportation. It's for, comes from HSTS and the ministry funds us for certain a certain group of students that needs additional transportation requirements. So do we get funded for that dollar for dollars? One of the few things that we get, it's funded dollar, dollar, dollar for dollar for, based on what we get from HSTS and their estimate for the upcoming year. So we still have a significant deficit in transportation, a very significant deficit in transportation. But 73,000, we end up costing netting out 1255, really isn't really going to help too much with that deficit. So.
Trustee Saunders? Thank you. Are you done? Yeah. Up next, we have Vice Chair Agnew. You have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So just a question here on to find all my notes and highlights. There's a line here about fees and contract services under textbooks and supplies. So it's showing a huge decrease in fees and contract services. And I'm wondering what that means from a student impact perspective.
Superintendent Laufs?
It's on.
That's okay. Thank you.
I'm going to scroll through. Adam, do you see that one?
So it goes, sorry.
Spec, SpecEd related?
Yes, sorry. I should have said that. I'm so sorry.
It's on, it's on appendix B4.
Yes.
Yeah.
Under textbooks and supplies.
Correct, fees and contract services.
And then there's fees and contract services.
Thank you, Adam.
Yeah. So through you, Mr. Chair. So last year, we had some vacancies when it came to internal staff related to psych assessments and psychological staff. And so what we did last year at revised estimates, so again, revised estimates is in December, we reallocated those vacancies to third-party contract costs. So we couldn't, we didn't have the staff inside to do the assessments we needed. So we paid an external third party to keep the volume or keep processing those assessments as special education needed. Now we have budgeted for those FTE again in hopes that we will fill the vacancies. If we don't, we can do the same thing next year, or sorry, at December at revised estimates and reallocate those unfilled positions to third-party contractors.
Vice Chair?
Thank you for the answer. And another question I have is not as dramatic, but is the use of school rentals? So why is this projected to decrease?
Superintendent Laufs?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Agnew. So the last couple of years, we've had lower than historical school rentals, largely due to the pandemic. So for a couple of those years, we weren't even allowing the public into our buildings. For 22, 23, I think we were projecting to see a significant bounce back in terms of those rentals. And now, as we're kind of in May and looking at our actuals for 23, 24 budget, we kind of curtailed some of that forecasting to reflect the current environment that we're seeing. So we haven't seen that full bounce bounce back in terms of our community use of our facilities.
Go ahead, you have three minutes, Vice Chair.
So just a follow-up on that, and I appreciate that answer. So from a a next sort of steps perspective, I don't know, you probably can't answer this, Adam, but what's being sort of done to try to get some of that revenue back? Are we having active conversations with community partners and community groups to try to bring that revenue back up? I know it's always been a strong source for us. So is there things that are being done to try to recapture that revenue? So is there things that are being done to try to recapture that revenue in the years moving forward?
Superintendent Law, maybe I'll just start and maybe Superintendent Eric might jump in as well. We are, we always were high. So we were trying to say we're going to be higher coming out of the COVID. So it's not like we're drop, or maybe dropping where our estimates were coming out of COVID. Either Ryan, I'll just pass it to you if you have anything else to add.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. We do have conversations with our community partners, a lot of the sports groups, soccer academies, that sort of thing, and try and entice them to come in and use our facilities. They do like using our facilities. So they kind of get the, jump the line with the cities and using can come in and use our facilities. So we do have conversations with them to try and do that. The one thing that we haven't done are, are our rates are tied to our actual expenses. With COVID happening the last few years, like our utility has been way down. We haven't adjusted our rates in the last couple of years. So that's one thing that, you know, with this full school year under our belt, we'll adjust that. It'll be next fall, we'll adjust that. And there should be a fairly sizable adjustment once we get a full year under our belt with energy price increases of the last three, four years. But that, that will bring it up, but it just hasn't come back quite as strong as we thought it would. Even though our bookings for the summer have been pretty high with turf. So I think that's starting, we're starting to see it come back now, so.
Vashir. Okay, thank you. Up next, we have trustee Paul, you're the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I have a question regarding textbooks and classroom supplies. So we've got a decrease of fourteen percent, just over fourteen percent. Can you talk to me about that? Because that scares me. We already know we're bringing in their own supplies or asking to bring in supplies.
Through you, Mr. Chair. And just one thing, just to kind of at least let everyone know here that in December, we dropped our budgets, as we know, with revised estimates. We brought those budgets back to the allocation. So whatever allocation we were previously, it gone back. So there was a decrease of ten, twenty, and thirty percent depending on the size of schools. So the school budgets have returned. Now, it might not be the exact same amount, because if enrollment dropped, it's all based on enrollment. So if the schools enrollment dropped, they won't have the same amount, but at least the base will be the same. So the, the denominator, or sorry, the, the factor will be the same with respect to that. So we've brought everything back. As to why we've dropped one point five or so million, there's a couple of reasons why. One part has to do with the tutoring money, where we had a lot of the tutoring money from this year that went to supplies. We ended up putting a lot to supplies, so that inflated us, our budget for this year. That was a, it's a PPF, too. So even though it's a PPF, it's still reflected in the overall budget on the board. The other reason was due to a essentially, it was funding that we're allowed to from the ministry to purchase small type capital items that are capital, but it comes out of our operating budget. We just have to reallocate it over to capital. And there's about seven hundred or so thousand on that amount that it's an accounting entry. So it's still there, it's still given. It's just treated differently. We have to amortize it over, depending on the asset, three to five years. So that's another reason why I dropped. But from a school level, a school perspective, it's, it's the same. We went right back to where we would have been last year at this time in June. So their school budgets have been returned to what they had previously.
Trustee Paul, keep going.
So sorry, you just, so part of that is amortization?
Well, part of it is.
I can, I can hopefully try and, try and do this. Forgive me for the accounting speak here. So within our operating budget, the ministry allows us to spend up to two and a half percent on minor capital assets. So we get, we have two streams of funding, our operating funding and our capital funding. But within our operating, they allow us that two percent to be applied to small capital assets that schools need, the central staff need, depending on what the board decides to do. So what we did this year is we were looking historically at what the schools and other departments were actually spending of their operating funds on these small capital assets that we then had to capitalize when we do our financial statements. And so what you have to do there is you have to take that money out of your operating budget and move it to your capital budget. And so what we've done is we've taken a historical projection of how much departments are using on capital and moving it to capital now, rather than seeing a big adjustment on the financial statements in the fall.
Trustee Paul, keep going.
All right, through you, Mr. Chair. Would that just be like a couple of percent of that fourteen percent?
It would be, it would be a significant portion because it's, it was, it was a change of about seven hundred and sixty thousand. So of that one point two million you're seeing, seven hundred and sixty of it is us reallocating expenses that typically we see people purchase small capital items and moving it to capital to better reflect what we're actually doing with the funds.
Yeah, sorry, trustee Paul, just to add to that. But the school's budget has not been impacted. It's one thing to be clear. That's more of our accounting entry on the side. We're trying to be more so more sophisticated on, on how we do things. But the schools themselves will have the same budget they would have had last year at this time. Pre the drop, increase, sorry. Yeah, it's, it's going back to what it was.
Trustee Paul. You're done? Okay, next up, we have trustee Kennedy, you're the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Fees and contract services under board administrations of twelve percent. Where are legal fees in there? And are legal fees only under fees and contract services, or are they in other locations?
Superintendent Law.
Yeah, through, through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Kennedy. So all legal fees for the board are reflected under fees and contract services.
Trustee Kennedy.
So that category is only legal fees, or it, it does include legal fees?
It includes legal fees. It's not only legal fees. A large portion of the total that you see board-wide, not just looking specifically at board admin, relates to our contract for our transportation.
Trustee Kennedy.
So how much are legal fees proposed within that for, for the next fiscal year?
From a total board perspective, through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Kennedy, five hundred thousand.
Go ahead, trustee Kennedy.
How much of that is related to the equity audit?
I don't have that.
Yeah, we wouldn't have that information here.
Trustee Kennedy.
So the, the equity audit started in June twenty twenty-one, and we're paying over time, it could in theory go over four fiscal years, depending if we paid any in twenty twenty-one. Is that, is that a, is that a, is that what's happening? Is it going over a four-year period?
Superintendent Law.
Yeah, I'll address that. It does go over, it has gone over, at least it's, on memory, two fiscal years so far. So I don't, well, it would be, I'm just thinking, I'm trying to think back to when I saw, well, we, technically, if it goes into next year, it would be three, you're correct, yeah. But I'm just going, if we finish it off in the summer, that'll be the two. But you're right, if it does go into the fall, then we would have more, correct.
Trustee Kennedy.
So do we know the total of how much we spent so far with the, on that, on that project?
Superintendent Law.
I wasn't prepared to answer that question.
So, yeah, trustee Kennedy, next question. Superintendent, Superintendent Law does not have the answer for you.
What should I do? I have to put on the budget? I don't have the answer. Can we get that information?
No, I don't know. It's not possible to put superintendents on spot. If you have had questions in advance and trustees are expected to come prepared the meeting and give us questions in advance, it would have helped. Your next question, trustee Kennedy.
So, so summer school. This year, we have summer school all online, and I'm wondering why we don't have any classes in person.
Superintendent, direct a plan.
I'm going to turn this over to a superintendent. So I don't want to talk about the survey and the information gathered to make that decision.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. Trustee Kennedy, as I explained in the email that I sent everyone a few weeks ago, there was very low enrollment. If you go back and reread that email, you'll notice that there are, if kids agree to go to one site, they would have to get themselves there. The most, if they agree, would be a hundred and seventy-six. And that would be five classes. And so it's just not feasible, and it's not fiscally responsible. But what we've also straight stressed is that there's close to three thousand, and this is, and registration closes in a few days. So the numbers could be a little bit higher. And so what you're looking at really is a different way that students learn and appreciate learning for their life, as I explained to you last week as well. So really, the difference here is there is no interest. There hasn't been interest for a few years, and we keep saying the same story over and over again.
Yeah, I'll interject a little bit here, trustee Kennedy. Let's talk about the budget and the numbers as presented. We are deviating away.
Oh, no, it relates to the budget. It relates to the budget.
Yeah.
Because I'm wondering why the Halton District School Board has online and in person. They have interest, but we don't have any interest. And I have concerns that, were our students given the ability to have transportation to school? Because they provide transportation. So if there's no transportation option guaranteed, maybe that's why they're not going in person. And that's why they're choosing to go online, because they can't drive from Georgetown to Burlington.
Superintendent Law.
Through you, Mr. Chair, trustee Kennedy, we're, this is so next year's budget. So this is twenty-three, twenty-four, not summer school. Summer school is coming is this year. So it's, it's a different, it's not really related to this budget.
You can ask it in the next action, at the next presentation.
Trustee Kennedy, keep going. Next question. Still have one minute. Okay, since you are done, we shall move on down to the next speaker. Trustee Murphy, you're up next, you're the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. I just, I just noticed fees and contract services come up six times. So I just, like, trying to understand why they're kind of lumped under so many different categories.
Superintendent Law.
Thank you through Mr. Chair. It's actually a category from the ministry. So each one of these, sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Murphy. Each one of these are, are related. So we have spec ed, for example, board administration governance grant. So we have to split it up onto all these individual, I guess, buckets of money. And each one would have a fees and contractual attached to it. So that's why, I think it's a question, right? Why do you see it in so many different slides? Yeah, that's why. So each one, so board administration governance would have a fees and contractual, special education would have a fees and contractual. We would have a fees and contractual just for a general, general school and such. So that's why. It's more of a, just a a ministry-type catch-all, not catch-all, but where we would put those type items. And when we want to break it down further, like we did here, so we could have our general fees and contractual, it includes all like our seven hundred or four hundred and seventy odd million. And then we break it down further for spec ed, sixty odd million dollars. So they would have a portion of that fees and contractual. And then board administration and governments would have a portion of that fees and contractual. So when you add all those up together theoretically, you should come to our total fees and contractual on that one slide with the four hundred and seventy odd million dollars, or four hundred and sixty-nine million dollars in expenses.
Thank you, trustee Murphy.
So just, for example, under, you know, school and office, like, what would be, what, what kind of things would be characterized under fees and contracts?
So we're looking, through Mr. Chair, so we're looking at just the general expense summary B two, I guess. Instruction supplies. There's a fees and contractual under instruction. Instruction expenses, there's one there. Is that the one you're looking at? Okay, I'll pick that one. Sure. Yeah, so that one's on, it's slide number B three. So there's a fees and contractual. This is instructions. So B three, fees and contractual under textbooks and supplies, about three hundred and sixteen odd thousand dollars. I'm not sure if we have the exact amount, what, what's that includes, if that's any IT-type software-type items there, Adam, or not. I'm not sure exactly. Would you know what exactly that line item is? I'm on B three, under instructions. Instructions, there's fees and contractuals. We could get that information, too. We don't, it's just specific, so. Fees and contractual under textbooks and supplies. And there's fees and con, contract services. So I don't, we could get that if we don't have exact what that budget's made up of. Yeah.
So would you like to get back to trustee Murphy with that answer later?
Sure.
Okay, trustee Murphy, go ahead. Next question.
I'm all done. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Up next is trustee Kelly. Three minutes for questions.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So I know it's mentioned regarding the classroom instruction piece, specifically textbooks and classroom supplies, that there was some money taken out to help support like the new indigenous studies courses. So I'm just curious, how come we are not getting any funding from the ministry? Like, would that be through GSNs, just because it's regarding like secondary courses?
Superintendent Law.
Sorry, trustee Kelly, and through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Kelly. So are we talking, sorry, about the, the funding for secondary course?
Yeah, the indigenous one, because I know, I think I might have gotten it wrong, so correct me, but that there was funds being taken out of our budget to be put towards like the new staffing for the indigenous courses.
For indigenous courses? Okay, I got you. No, we actually have that there. I'm looking to Adam to, to, like, it's, it's.
Through you, through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Kelly. So as part of the I'm sorry, as part of the GSN this year, the government introduced a second component to our indigenous funding. And what we've done is, at June sixth, we had earmarked a large portion of that to be just going into the textbooks and supplies. So we didn't have a specific budget for that yet. And then, once we were doing some more analysis on our staffing side, we elected to allocate a portion of that to classroom teachers, rather than what was in the budget previously.
Thank you. Go ahead. Trustee Murphy. Are you done? Okay, thank you. Trustee Kelly. So I have a speaker's list here, but all the trustees on the speaker's list have had the opportunity for three minutes. I shall now open up close question period and open up the, the debate. And so on the speaker's list, we have trustee Agnew, you're the floor, and I'm opening up debate question mark there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just wanted to come back to a question that was asked earlier from trustee Powell with respect to those classroom supplies. So in understanding what you've said, but when we talk about that in a real, real context, or we do get a lot of questions, concerns, comments with respect to the supplies in the classrooms. So when you talk about that amount coming back up, like, what does that mean? Because I'm hearing that teachers can't get this, they can't get that. I, I'm hearing that we don't have supplies in the classroom. I'm hearing that can be consumables amount has been reduced, like, what? So if we say we're bringing that back, should next year be better with respect to the availability of funds to purchase those classroom supplies? Like, is that what we're, what I'm hearing?
Superintendent Law.
Through you, Mr. Chair. That is correct, trustee Agnew. If you didn't hear as much until recently, if we're going back to how we were before, it should go back to, back to how we were in our typical year, right? So let's go back two years ago. We were, when our budgets were the same. Typically, they've always been for a number of years now. So if you weren't hearing the complaints as much before, you should, we're going back to that same level.
Thank you.
Just a follow-up on that.
There's no follow-up, trustee.
I have another question of clarification.
Vashir, there's no follow-up. This is debate.
I'm still debating that.
I'm sorry. That's done. I'm going to move on to trustee Ohan Chanara. Your hand is up. You have three minutes for debate.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I just really wanted to make a comment about the way the policy, the way the budget's been presented. I've been here for five years, and I found this the easiest to read. And it may just be me. So thank you to you and your department, because the way it's been presented, it's a lot easier to read and understand, to help us ask good questions. So thank you for that.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanara. With that, I shall close debate and open, and call the vote. The trustees, we are voting on the second part of the motion. Resolve that the Halton Catholic District School Board approved the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget estimates excluding salary and benefits in the amount of one hundred and one million fifty-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars. Trustee Carabella, how do you vote?
I'm opposed.
Trustee Paul. Trustee Kennedy.
Opposed.
Trustee Ohan Chanara.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew. Sure. Trustee Murphy.
I'm opposed.
Trustee Saunders. Trustee Kelly.
In favor.
Trustee Chua.
In favor.
Trustee Boy. Trustee Boy.
In favor.
Trustee Kuzma.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew. Sorry.
In favor.
And trustee Duarte is in favor. We have five in favor. Four opposed. Motion carries the budget is approved. We shall now move on down to action item nine point three. Twenty-two-four Canadian Association of Public Schools International Trade Mission Brazil CAPS I. Superintendent Cordero, could you please present your report? And I will read the motion after that.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. Before I present this action report, I wish to acknowledge and thank Corinne Lauren, Tracy Levante, Bronco Vidovic, staff in planning services, as well as Vice Principal Antonio Montanari and youth settlement worker Rick Kai for their great work in supporting the HCDSP's international student program, as well as Administrative Assistant Nikki Piva. The purpose of this report is share, is to share information and request the HCDSP's attendance at the International Student Trade Mission in Sao Paulo, Brazil, to be held February twenty-sixth to the twenty-ninth of twenty-two-four. The event is recommended by the Canadian Association of Public Schools International, better known as CAPS-E. The HCDSP is one of eighteen school districts selected in the application process among the one hundred and twenty-eight CAPS-E member, members nationwide. The trade mission provides an excellent opportunity to develop partnerships with top quality international agencies, school districts, and government officials. The HCDSP has not traveled to Brazil since September twenty-fifteen and currently has a limited presence in Central and South America with respect to international students. This is a tremendous opportunity to help grow enrollment from this geographical region. Brazil is home to the largest population of self-identified Catholics in the world, approximately one hundred and twenty-three million, and represents the fifth largest market of outgoing international, international students globally. Information about the trade mission is found in appendix A. And for a projected cost breakdown, please refer to appendix C. The recommendation is presented for the consideration of the board. And at this time, I welcome any questions that trustees may have.
Thank you, Superintendent Cordero. First, I shall read the motion and then move it second it, and then I'll take the questions. Resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board approved the request for travel outside of Canada by one senior staff member to attend the CAPS-I Trade Mission in Sao Paulo, Brazil from February twenty-sixth to twenty-ninth, twenty-two-four. May I have a mover, please? Moved by trustee Saunders. Looking for a second there. Trustee Murphy. The motion is ordered. I shall now place it on the, is in order. I shall place it on the floor. I shall open up question period. Three minutes for question for trustees. So we shall open up the floor and we have trustee Ohan Chanada. Your hand is up. You're the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, to Director Klein. I guess my question, the last time we went to this conference in Brazil was September two thousand and fifteen. Just born. So I'm just wondering, don't laugh. So I'm just wondering, do we, how many international students? Do we have that number that we acquired due to that trip back then?
Superintendent Cordero.
That I don't know. But I can say that currently of the three hundred and three international students for the upcoming school year, seven are from Central and South America.
Trustee Ohan Chanada.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. And I I think in the report it stated it, but and and for full transparency, I asked you last night at Holy Cross graduation, why did you pick Brazil? Why, why do you think that would be, and forgive my term, the best revenue generated trip? Even though we're talking with children. So forgive that term, please.
Superintendent Cordero.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Well, Brazil represents the fifth largest market in the world of international students outbound. The last couple of years, we've traveled to Germany, which is the fourth largest outbound nation of international students. The top three are China, India, which India, not to my knowledge, hosts any recruitment trade missions. And and the third is South Korea, which in in some, some respects is a bit of a political hot place with tensions sometimes internationally. So given that the fact that we have a limited presence in South America, that Brazil's the largest population of Catholics across the world, they're a growing nation internationally in terms of innovation and technology. And maybe some of our students can learn from that lived experience from international students coming into our communities. And the emphasis on technology recently on by the Ministry of Education, just thought that as a wholesome experience, it might be an an area that our students can benefit from in terms of international students being in their classrooms.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanada. Okay, up next is trustee Murphy. You're the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair, to Superintendent Cordero. I just, I'm trying to see here if I missed it, but is there any number, like, how many people are going to attend or looking to attend the conference?
Superintendent Cordero.
So, yeah, there are eighteen successful districts, seven different provinces represented, four districts in Ontario, Waterloo, Niagara Catholic, Lakehead Public and ourselves. Generally speaking, districts send two or three representatives. It's been our practice the last few years only to send one, so hence the application to send one.
Trustee Murphy.
That's everything. Thank you.
Up next is trustee Powell. You're the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I'm just, out of curiosity, so there, I have two questions. You have, we have, currently have eighty international students. Is that correct?
We have two hundred and twenty-seven commencing in September of twenty-two-three in secondary and seventy-six in elementary. So three hundred and three total.
Since we've grown from, sorry, follow up.
Keep going.
We've grown from eighty students in twenty-one, twenty-two to a projected three hundred for twenty-three, twenty-four.
Superintendent Cordero.
That sounds about right.
Well, so I just wondered where, how do we determine that that, those numbers come from trips like this?
Superintendent Cordero.
Um, well, during these trips, hopefully, successful, we are able to sign agreements with agents representing different families from different parts of the world. Generally speaking, in the last number of trips that we've had, we've signed anywhere between seven and twelve different agents representing a variety of number of families. And I think the numbers demonstrate over the last couple of years, the signing of those agent agreements and the representation of families has produced increased enrollment in international students.
Trustee Powell, go ahead.
Right. So there's really no guarantee, right?
Superintendent Cordero.
No, there's never ever a guarantee, but I think we've demonstrated over the last few years a track record of results.
Trustee Powell.
If, I mean, I just look at the optics in here where we've asked our schools to tighten up and we have parents explaining to us that they're submitting all kinds of supplies for schools that should be provided. How do we justify the expense of an international trip when there are other options, virtual or, I don't know?
I'll pass this to Director Klein.
Thank you.
Director Klein.
I would think we justify it in a sense of terms of long-term plan. We want to have a better, improved footprint in terms of international education. I think it's taken for granted that the world is a smaller place than it was ten, fifteen years ago. The board, one of the boards that he mentioned right now, Waterloo Catholic, I think, has made great advances in terms of partnerships with different countries around the the world. And I I think this is, I think this is money well spent, frankly. I think it's a good idea. I think it would help us with those partnerships. There are no guarantees, we all know that. But I think in terms of partnerships with countries like Brazil, I think this would, this, this is a good investment.
Trustee Powell, go ahead.
Sorry, I just have concerns when there's, I can't support something when there's teachers that are spending over five hundred dollars out of their own pocket. And I think we gotta look at other options. So I'd be open to exploring other options.
Thank you, trustee Paul. So, okay, so we shall now move on to the next speaker, vice chair.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So the question that I have is probably a process. So I I saw that there's a number of options that are listed. And recognizing the rationale that was given for selecting Brazil. Does this process go through? So when this application is made to attend this, are the options given to the director? And there's a discussion about which one to apply to before it's brought here to the Board of Trustees?
Director Klein.
Superintendent Cordero can correct me, but I do recall this was part of a discussion we would have had in our regular weekly senior team meetings a month or so ago. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Vice chair.
So follow up. So when those conversations happen then, is there also consideration given to the cost? Like, I do note that Brazil is the most expensive one on the list. And just given to what trustee Powell said about some of the other things that are happening and transpiring, I'm sure that there are other opportunities that would be equally as good in some of those other options. So I'm just wondering, are those considerations also taken into discussion when deciding on? And further to that, I heard mention that India's in the top three. So I'm just curious why the Bangladesh virtual option wasn't considered? It's half the price and it is one of the top three.
I'll start.
Director Klein.
Thank you, through you, Chair. I'll start the conversation by saying, I'm going to tip it over to Superintendent Cordero, that at those, certainly those weekly meetings, we've seen your team is not shy in terms of kicking the tires of any, of any of the proposals, whether it's this or others. And so tho- those are fairly fearless conversations. But I see Superintendent Cordero might want to add a little more to those final questions.
Yeah, if I could add, the the International Student Program strategy encompasses both a virtual and an in-person component. So we have participated in the virtual platform and will continue to do so. The last number of years, we've participated in virtual trade missions in South Korea, in China, and even last year in Brazil. So we look at various opportunities that could maximize the return of our investment. This is a unique situation because it's eighteen school districts. There are superintendents, sometimes directors, actually sometimes trustees, traveling together and meeting with actual school districts and their leadership and the agents representing the family. So the uniqueness of the opportunity is what, you know, was the tipping point for us to make this decision.
Thank you. Vice chair.
Yep, thank you. So I I mean, if we're using that, I also see that Japan has twenty members. So that would actually be two thousand dollars less almost, and it would be additional members till the age with. But having said that, recognizing that there were two previous trips this past year, one to Germany, one to Vancouver. And I don't know that at this point, we've actually had concrete data as far as the success of those, those conferences, as far as actualizing on registrations. You know, I would be curious to see if we took a pause for a year, given everything else going on, see if that had an impact on our numbers. Perhaps people are enrolling because they've heard great things about us in other ways and not necessarily through these particular trips. And we take a look and see what it looks like, and then we pick it up again next year if the environment is better from a budget perspective. That would be my comment.
Thank you, vice chair. Up next is trustee Kelly.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Most of my questions have already been answered, but I do have a question regarding, that you mentioned that there's a small demographic of Latin American international students. Do we know specifically why? Is it because there haven't been any visits since twenty-fifteen?
Superintendent Cordero.
I think that's part of the calculus that we made as as a team. We did participate in a Brazilian virtual trade mission last year. And two years ago, or sorry, three years ago, when it first started, the role, the results haven't been significant in speaking with CAPS-E, OAST-E, ISIF and other sponsors of these trade missions internationally. They always recommend the in-person experience because you build relationships. And oftentimes, decisions are based on the relationships that are forged during these events.
Trustee Kelly.
Yeah, for sure. My follow up is, do we have any specific numbers on the demographics that are largely represented in our international student body? And is it because we've done those like in-person trips? Or is it just?
Yes, thank, good question to to trustee Kelly. So a couple of years ago, when we're at eighty-one international students at the secondary level, I don't know the exact number, but in the mid-sixties is what the representation was from China, about four or five from Korea, one or two from Vietnam. And we had less than ten internationals from Europe. The investment over the last two years in Berlin has resulted in, you know, north of fifty to sixty students internationally coming now from different parts of Europe, whether it be Germany, Spain, Italy, the Netherlands, Switzerland, et cetera. So there's a proven track record that relationships matter. And being present and engaging in those conversations in person has a, has a greater impact.
Thank you, trustee Kelly. Yep. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So then, I guess regarding that, were there any recent trips that were taken to East Asia, Southeast Asia?
Go ahead.
There hasn't. I believe the last trip was in two thousand and nineteen, pre-COVID, a trip to Vietnam. That's certainly a consideration for next year, but we wanted to explore Latin America, given the low numbers of international students from that region of the world. So if you look at our international students, about three hundred, probably two-thirds are from Asia, Southeast Asia in particular, and the other third is from Europe. And we wanted to branch out to countries like Mexico, Chile, Colombia, Brazil. And Brazil being the largest populated country in the world, you know, and given this opportunity, it makes good sense, I guess, for us.
Trustee Kelly.
That's good. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is trustee Saunders. Trustee Saunders, you have three minutes for questions.
Yep, through you, Mr. Chair. Superintendent Cordero, if you can remind us how much these students have to pay to come to our, our schools?
Superintendent Cordero.
So the tuition fee commencing in September twenty-two-three is fifteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars per student. On the record, I should inform you that, I believe, two years ago, and superintendent loves can maybe better clarify. The Ministry of Education, which is a big supporter of international student programs, and so is the federal government, the ministry now takes thirteen hundred dollars from that tuition fee for themselves. So we, we, in terms of revenue, would be thirteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Trustee Saunders, follow up. So for this year, how much money would this program have brought into our, into our board in total? Superintendent Cordero.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I think that might be better answered by the senior manager or the superintendent finance.
Superintendent Loves, would you have any?
I don't have that, that money or sorry, that figure right at my, am I ready? I do know if you see, look into our budget for next year, where we incorporated a estimate for next year. One thing it's not incorporated in that is the amount of the thirteen hundred per international student because that comes directly off our GSN. So it's one thing to reduce that by.
Trustee Saunders. Okay, and my final question, superintendent, through superintendent, would these students be participating in AP and IB programs? Would they be, high numbers of them participating in these programs? Superintendent Cordero.
Higher numbers in the advanced placement program because there's a concentrated effort in specializing in various areas, whether it be engineering, physics, math, science. But there are a few numbers, single digits of international students in the IB program. For them to participate in the IB program, especially in grade eleven and twelve, they would have had to been enrolled in IB in their homeland and in the academy for that. But single digits at best.
Trustee Saunders, done. Up next is trustee Kennedy. You have three minutes. Time starts now.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, to Superintendent Cordero. If, maybe I missed it, but if we do get even one student from this trip who comes to to our board, what would be the roughly the cost for them? What would they, what would they?
I think, I think Superintendent Cordero just answered the question, but can re- I think, I think Superintendent Cordero just answered the question, but can you answer the question?
Yeah, the revenue portion would be 1,300 to the ministry, 13,950 to HCSB.
Trustee Kennedy.
So basically, if you get two, if you get two students, you've more than paid for your trip. Is that fair to say?
Superintendent Cordero.
And you know, there's other costs, right? Because of running international student programs and whatnot, but again, I obviously, any number of students would certainly help.
Trustee Kennedy.
Oh, Superintendent Lofson, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry. I was just going to mention that, Trustee Cordero already mentioned it, there would be other costs as well, so it's not as clean as just pure revenue coming in. But there would be additional costs, ESL costs and things like that.
Administrative costs. So that, I didn't know this. So is there, do we have like kind of a break even idea? Or do we have any idea what it would be to break even?
So yeah, getting into finances here, but.
Yeah, this is kind of, it's, it's a good question. It's something that we need to, we're actually, it's on our agenda for the summer. We found out some information regarding the staffing side of it, kind of changes our number a little bit on how we're currently staffing it. So I need to kind of go back and look at a little bit more fulsome idea on how we're, on how we're costing out the other side of to get that break even. The break even that we had before is actually changed a little bit. So I don't, I don't feel comfortable at this time to say what our pure break even is, but it is something we'll be doing over the summer.
Trustee Kennedy.
No, I just want to say, I think this is a good idea. I do know from demographics, we are having a lot of international students come to Canada. So that, that's a good thing. And we don't know the break even, but it seems like, you know, we are, we are in a board that is declining enrollment. And I think anything we can do to try to increase our enrollment, you know, which we are down, I think 12, 13 million funding Superintendent Lofson had mentioned, I think would be, would be a good, a good step. And, you know, $6,000, I feel like is a good, is a reasonable cost to, to attempt to get more international students.
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy. With that, I shall close up question period and open up debate. Trustees have three minutes to debate this thing, this item. And I shall open up debate. First up is Vice Chair Agnew, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So again, recognizing everything that's been said and not disagreeing that enrollment is down and these create great opportunities. I think for me right now, given that, you know, everyone's being asked to sacrifice, that there is a virtual option that is available. Bangladesh is, you know, right there. Next, India. India is listed in the top three. You know, I think that that could be something worth considering, given that we just had two in-person events that took place. And without the ability to actually directly tie those visits to the students that are coming, we don't, we don't have concrete data that says that those students are registered because of these meet and greets. So in the absence of that, as I said before, I don't see, you know, why it would be unreasonable to perhaps take a pause, assess, see if it's made a difference by not attending. And, you know, $10,000, we might be able to spend in another fashion. So again, just my comments on the matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Up next is Trustee Saunders. You have the floor.
Yeah, I think it's a good investment. I, I think Superintendent Cordero has proven that he's capable of attracting some pretty, some good numbers. So I would say I want to support this because I think it's a good investment. And I'm sure we'll be, it'll pay dividends within a very short period of time.
Thank you, Trustee Saunders. With that, I shall close. Trustee Kennedy, you have your hand up. You have the floor.
Yeah, same thing. I think it'd be great to do more than one, Bangladesh and potentially Brazil. Like I said, anything we can do to try to increase enrollment, it's been four years now of declining enrollment. And I will be, I'll be supporting this motion. I think this is an example of, you could say, professional development. And trying to increase our, our student population is a good idea.
Thank you. Up next, Dusty Boy.
I just wanted to say, from like an in-school perspective, I know that this year at Loyola, we have a lot of international students. We always have. And I remember this year, we saw a lot more. There were some students in my grade from Germany and European countries, which is something we've never had before. So I think that we've seen the benefits of this, so I will be supporting it.
Thank you, Dusty Boy. With that, Trustee Powell, let's see your hand up there. You have the floor.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I just wondered if there is a way that we could actually start tracking, like to get the data so we can know what we're benefiting from these trips? And we ask for more in-depth reports when you.
Right now, we have a debate question mark. So Superintendent Lofson, do we track funds coming in separately for?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Trustee Powell. I'm not sure if the question was more on the success rate of, of the trips, or is that really what it was more than?
Yeah.
For that, I can say just, we have increased our numbers in international students. It is, but I don't have the, it's hard to kind of, again, maybe it's unfair for me to answer. But I'll hand it over to Superintendent Cordero.
Superintendent Cordero.
Well, I can say that in May, I was invited to the University of St. Jerome in Waterloo as a member of the select panel. And the reason for my participation was because we were determined by OWASTI, the Ontario Association of School Districts for Ontario and International Programming, for our rapid growth in international programs. And I can say, over the last three years, the co-terminus board has experienced a significant drop in international students. So that's information that has been shared with me in terms of comparables as to how we're doing compared to other districts in Ontario. And I was proud to represent and speak on behalf of the great things that the team of people that I mentioned earlier, both in planning services and at the school level are doing to support these students and create a a vibrant, culturally responsive and relevant experience in the classroom that's real and that's honest between students themselves. And I think the student trustees have shared that as well.
Thank you, Trustee Superintendent Cordero. Trustee Kelly, you have not spoken to this. You have three minutes for debate.
Debate, question mark. I did have something I did want to have answered. And I guess in regards to the international students that are enrolled, do they get any like additional support? So for example, if they need extra help with English or French, do they have like ESL programs that are there to aid them?
Superintendent Cordero.
Yeah, most of our international students will access additional supports. The senior grades generally don't go in ESL programs because they're looking for a post-secondary pathway into university. And obviously, you know, they need their English 3U and their English 4U to do that. But our ESL teachers are there and oftentimes monitor them in the younger grades and especially in the elementary school level. So yes, those supports do exist. Please keep in mind that the majority of ESL teachers, the students in ESL classes in secondary are made up of newcomers to Canada.
Thank you. Thank you, trustees. With that, we have completed question period. We have completed debate time. I shall now call the vote. Trustee Powell.
I, I'm.
Trustee Kennedy.
I'm in favor.
Trustee Uhlan Chanada.
I'm in favor.
Trustee Agnew.
Oppose.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Saunders.
In favor.
Trustee Kelly.
I'm still.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Chua.
In favor.
Trustee Boy.
In favor.
Trustee Kuzma.
In favor.
We have five in favor, two opposed. No extension motion carries. Shall now move on. So trustees, at this point in time, it's 9:25. Does anybody want a recess break? Okay, I shall call a recess. It's 9:25. We take a five-minute recess. We'll be back in five minutes. Thank you. Okay. Superintendent, could you please share the policy on screen?
Certainly, Mr. Chair.
Could you share the motion, please?
I do not have the motion.
The motion in the, in his crib, the motion as it stands.
I have, I have the changes to the policy that have been passed it. I don't have the motion.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I can read it.
Okay, please go ahead.
Okay, I'll read it slowly. Recommendation, the following recommendation is presented for the consideration of the board. Resolve that the Holden Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee that policy I I dash thirteen psychoeducational psychological assessment of individual students be approved.
Thank you, trustee O'Hearn Chenara. This item has come to us from the policy, we only need a mover. I shall now place this on the floor. Trustees, do you have any questions on this policy? I see trustee Carabella, you have your hands up. You have an amendment to the policy, is it?
Yes, Mr. Chair, and do we have a second or?
No, I want to see the amendment first. Can can we see the what the amendment is about?
Sure, but you need a second to put it on the table so that I can put an amendment.
So the policy is already on a table. It's come it's come from policy, you don't need a second.
Oh, I see.
The policy is on the table.
Perfect.
So your amendment needs to be displayed and then that gets moved and seconded.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All the good stuff, yeah.
So it's on the it's on the screen now. So I'm just striking out will be guided by an anti-racist and anti-oppressive framework and instead replace it with recognizes and inclusive and equitable framework and shall include a review, recognition and elimination of any potential bias. I'm also adding another bullet. Assessments shall be delivered in the child's first language where possible and always in a language in which the child possesses the appropriate facility.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. This changes was was.
It's different.
It's different from that, okay.
I will explain when you get a second or I can explain.
Sure, sure, yeah. So this is an amendment to policy I I dash thirteen. Trustee Carabella moves. Looking for a second.
I'll second it.
Seconded by trustee Murphy. Give me a second. Trustee Carabella, you have five minutes to present. And time starts now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm proposing this amendment, it's a bit modified from last week in one bullet is missing. Actually, I don't have that written one right in front of me, what I did not include, but I'm including these two. I'm including these because I would like to. I'm aware of how assessments could have bias, but not really how they can be racist and oppressive, and I think that this language that recognizes and inclusive and equitable framework is like a constructive wording that respects our our staff and respects the whole process and would facilitate assessments being done if parents are looking at this, they would understand this better, I think. And the part about last week in our policy meeting, we were debating Program Memorandum fifty-nine, and it has been now included, and I see that it's updated to twenty twenty-one. So it is a recent update, and that's why I wanted to put back in that the assessments can be delivered in the child's first language where possible and always in a language in which the child possesses the appropriate facility, because that reflects the last paragraph of this P P M fifty-nine that says, "The assessment should be conducted in English for an English-speaking pupil and in French for a French-speaking pupil. If the pupil's first language is other than English or French and/or the pupil acts facility in either of these languages, consideration should be given to postponing the assessment or, where possible, conducting the assessment in the child's first language."
Dan, trustee Carabella?
Well, I was going to say we have many second language learners, and I think this is important consideration. We also had a correspondence in the agenda package that explains this motion, and if I understood it correctly, that the these this was debated or talked about and for the knowledge that the committee was okay with these amendments. And I think I have a quote from that, but it's in the agenda package.
Thank you, trustee Carabella.
So I'm just, you know, we did talk about it last week. I don't, I'm just bringing it back a little bit more modified and hoping that the it would be voted in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. I was speaking with trustee Kuzma. Trustee Kuzma, you're floor, you have three minutes.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair.
Four questions, and then we do.
So I remember when we had this discussion last week, I'm not sure specifically everything, but I remember there was a point brought up that, I forget which specific governing body that does this, hasn't come out with exactly the specifications for these sort of tests on the with the students. And I remember it was a point of discussion that putting specific things that we are going to do in these tests wouldn't be the best idea because we're not sure specifically what is going to be released about that, and I'm not sure if any staff can help with that or confirm or deny, I'm just am wondering if that's the case. Thank you.
Thank you. Your question is to staff?
Yeah.
I'll pass this on to Supreme and Rosini. Supreme Rosini, would you be in a position to respond?
Now, I think it was Oliver who had mentioned about the College of Psychologists and saying that while the goal of conducting assessments in the child's child's facility, the goal of that is a good goal, the implementation of that is a bit fraught with with challenges. And it not only speaks to the fact that there might be a lack of psychologists speaking a number of different languages, it's also trying to find a standardized normed test in that particular language that then can be administered, and then the results written in that language and likely needing to be translated. And so there are those barriers that exist right now in our province and probably more Canada-wide. And so to go there and say where possible would likely mean it's not possible right now, and that's why I had suggested to keep the language silent around the language of assessment so that if the ministry does come out with some direction, we can include that direction when we review the policy in another three years. That was that was, I think, what you were referring to, trustee.
Trustee Kuzma, next question.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Just a question, would I be able to suggest a motion or no? Okay, that's all that, thank you.
Next up is trustee Saunders. Trustee Saunders?
I through you, Mr. Chairman. To staff, I'm just wondering, in in a case where we do have a child that has a language that we're not prepared to deal with, what do we do now? Do we outsource or do we bring somebody in who can handle this if we if we need to do the assessment? I'm just wondering, because they just said it wasn't possible to do, but we must be doing something, so I'm just wondering what that is.
Supreme and Rosini?
Through you, Mr. Chair. To trustee Saunders. So the Special Education Department has been working quite closely with the multilingual department on developing a process for psychological speech and language assessments for children who have who have English as a second language. That's the first piece that I'd like to share with you. The second piece is that where there may be a language barrier, they would administer, the psych the psychological staff would administer non-verbal tests of of intelligence if they're able to do that. Thirdly, I did ask the question if there was any with if there were any requests that have been made in the past five years for assessments in another language, and there has not been.
Trustee Saunders?
That's good, thanks.
Thank you, trustee Saunders. Trustee Murphy, just got a hand in there. Trustee Murphy on the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you to whomever can answer. I guess I'm just trying to understand because I'm new, is the P P M, like, does it count as a ministry directive? Because it does say in the P P M that it should be utilizing the child's first language in an assessment, so are we going against a directive by not doing that, by not offering that option?
Directive line?
P P Ms can be can be thought in that way, but they are things that impact procedural matters, not necessarily policy matters. So the key for the P P Ms, I think, in terms of how school boards live their day-to-day lives would be in procedural matters, not necessarily in policy.
Trustee Murphy?
Yeah, I'm just thinking from the perspective of, I suppose, a parent might be looking at this, just to try to understand their next steps, I don't know, I'm just trying to kind of look at it from different angles, so thank you.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. With that, I see no other trustees, hands up, trustee. At this point, I'm now now I'm going to open up for debate, and I think I heard from trustee Kuzma that you want to bring a change, but you want to bring a amendment with a trustee, the NDA trustee. Is that what I heard from you? You want to suggest some changes there?
Not anymore, no, no, thanks.
Okay, so I see trustee Bowie, you have your hand up. We have finished question period, debate.
I just wanted to speak to the first bullet, I believe the second one has been addressed by staff. I just think that if we're posing the question to the board, do we want to be anti-racist and anti-oppressive? I would hope that the answer will always be yes, and therefore I don't think that there's any need for us to change that language there. I think it would be problematic for us to remove that. And and I just think that we always want to be striving to be anti-racist and anti-oppressive in our work. I don't think that there's a problem with that language. I don't think that it's that the language that precedes that trustee Carabella has presented as an alternative addresses those issues, and I don't think that, like, I I just think it's a terribly bad look for the board if we're watering down the language of anti-racism and anti-oppression, because the answer to do we want to be anti-racist and anti-oppressive should always be yes.
Thank you, trustee Bowie. Next up, I see trustee Kuzma, you want to debate, is it? Yeah, okay, go ahead. Okay, trustee Saunders, you have three minutes.
Yeah, just and it's like what I said last week, that these these words are kind of inflammatory words, and and I would I would like sort of challenge this, if we've done one of these assessments before in a racist or oppressive manner, could someone give me an example of that? Like, what would that look like?
Thank you, trustee Saunders. I see no other hands up. Trustee Kuzma, I see your hand up now.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I think that regardless of whether there's been a racist or oppressive thing that's happened, I think it's still important to have the stance, we don't want to be racist and we don't want to be oppressive. I don't think that changing the wording is a good thing. I think that saying bluntly, yes, it's, you said the wording is, I forget the exact word, it's inflammatory, but that's a good thing. We want it to be, we don't want to be racist, we don't want to be oppressive, and I think changing that completely changes, we we don't want it to look like that. Thanks.
Thank you. Oh, I see a couple of hands up now. Up next is trustee Murphy. Three minutes for debate.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make the point, like, I support this because if we're going to say we're anti-oppressive, one way of actually showing that with actionable items is to ensure that we're delivering it in the person's language, because as an English speaker, we already have an advantage over a non-English speaker in our country. So why are we stating it in one phrase, but then somehow we're not okay with stating for sure what we'll do, which is an actionable item that's tangibly related to being working under an anti-oppressive framework? So I just wanted to put that out there because to me, that just seems like a bit of a contradiction, and and I actually like the edits because I think they're more comprehensive and inclusive, and they actually speak to what we will do.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. I see trustee trustee O'Hearn Chenara, you have your hand up, you're the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair, and and speaking as trustee O'Hearn Chenara, but also as policy chair. The policy that's come before us at the board has been vetted through the Policy Committee, and albeit I don't disregard making things hashtag be better as we move forward, this policy has also been vetted, to my understanding, through C I A, which is the Committee to Make Recommendations. So the policy that we have before us at the board, I think, has been vetted through the appropriate departments. I don't think that's me, is that me? I want my mic to be on. Sorry, I apologize, I didn't know that affected it. Anyway, so what I'm trying to say is, I I think the policy is brought before us, I think I will approve that, I will not approve any amendments, and I caution fellow trustees who have been here for five years of making amendments at a board table. We have to be very careful when we're doing that because it's a bit of a rush sometimes, but I'll leave that up to all your discretion when we vote for these amendments. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. I sorry, trustee O'Hearn Chenara, thank you so much for that. I see no other hands up. Trustee Bowie, you already had your say, I can name down here. So I have a comment to make here, this is a board meeting, policies where policies get discussed and debated. My role as chair is to make sure every single trustee here has the information to come to this table and make an informed decision. Amendment a policy out here at the last minute does not give trustees the opportunity to think, reflect, come to the board and make good decisions. So I I I'm not in a position to ever support any amendment coming to a policy here. Changes to policy should be done in policy itself. That gives all the trustees the opportunity to think about it and come to the board prepare board table prepared for discussion. Changes of a semantic nature, I can understand that, but not changes of this nature, so I will never be supporting such a amendment. So with that, I shall close discussion and call the board. Oh, sorry, trustee Carabella, you get to close discussion. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, part of the, we have a right to make amendments, and yes, it's nice to have it prepared. I will try and effort to do that next time. I did think this one was very similar to what we had last week, and we do reflect as we go on the next week, and it's really at the board meeting that our decisions and amendments and votes are made binding. Given that, I I stand by my amendment, and I think it's better to the policy. I appreciate what trustee Murphy mentioned, and I echo that, and with that, I hope that our the trustees can vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee.
And serve our students, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. With that, I will call the vote. Trustee Kennedy, how do you vote? Come back to you. It's on both the blue points, that's what the amendment was. It was moved, moved by trustee Carabella, seconded by trustee Murphy, and we did not split up its one amendment. So how do you vote?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hearn Chenara?
Opposed.
Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Opposed.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
Opposed.
Trustee Chua?
Opposed.
Trustee Bowie?
Opposed.
Trustee Kuzma?
I'm voting opposed on the fact that staff.
Thank you.
Said this.
Trustee Duarte is opposed, we have four in favor, five opposed, motion fails, amendment fails. We shall now move back to the policy and vote on the policy as it is as it is presented to the board. Can I see the policy on screen, please? Trustee O'Hearn Chenara, could you please read the motion again? Oh, sorry, it was, please read the motion again.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, do you want me to read it again?
Yes, please, yes, please.
I'm sorry, it wasn't clear, apologize. Be resolved that the Holden Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee that policy I I dash thirteen psychoeducational psychological assessment of individual students be approved.
Thank you, trustee O'Hearn Chenara, this does not need a second, I shall now call the vote on this item. Trustee O'Hearn Chenara, how do you vote?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
Opposed.
Trustee Saunders? Trustee Saunders?
Opposed.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Chua?
In favor.
Trustee Boye?
In favor.
Trustee Kuzma?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee Powell?
Favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
Abstain.
We have four in favor, three opposed, one abstention, but the policy carries, the motion carries. The policy is approved. We shall now move on down to item 9.6, which was 6.1.3.3, policy II-25. Selection of Learning and Library Materials. Trustee Ohan Chanara, could you please present, read the motion?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Recommendation, the following recommendation is presented for the consideration of the board. Be resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the policy committee that policy II-25, selection of learning and library materials, be approved.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanara. This comes to us from policy, does not need a second. This item was pulled out from the consent agenda by trustee Carabella. Trustee Carabella, you're the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I asked for this item to be brought out because of correspondence that's in our board's package that was meant to be a delegation that is now as a correspondence. Bringing to my attention and to all of us' attention, there are several other letters written to, to us about material in the library that has been sexually explicit. And so I'd like to bring that up as a discussion. I have some questions first, and then I have an amendment to make.
So trustee Carabella, this is an action item. It's come from policy, so there's no discussion here. We put an amendment, and then we have a discussion on that after we have the amendment.
Okay.
So we don't have a discussion first.
Okay. Okay, so I sent my amendment to, it would be an amendment under the principles, and it would be the last bullet, under principles, and it would be materials of a sexually explicit nature as defined in the Criminal Code of Canada, section 171.5. In either word, pictures, and/or audio, will not be permitted based on the principles and purpose of this policy.
Can I see the, okay, thank you. So this is an amendment to policy II-25. This is under which section, trustee Carabella? The first section?
Under principles.
Principles. Okay. Trustees, you see the amendment on the screen. May I have a mover? Trustee Carabella moves. Looking for a second, please.
I'll second it.
Trustee Carabella, you get five minutes to open up discussion. You're the floor.
So I'll open up with a discussion, but I did have questions as well about these materials and appearing in our library. But I will speak first, why I decided to make this amendment and why I think this issue is. You know, this is, again, an example of what came up from last week to this week, and it's very important. So I'm amending this. I'm amending as these materials should not be permitted in our elementary and secondary schools. When we saw, when we saw the declined delegation, it was sent to us with viewer discretion, a warning, because the delegation included some, some graphics. So if we as adults need to be warned, that means that our children, our students, should not be exposed to them and should be warned and not just not exposed to them. A few weeks ago, too, we got served as trustees, it came to my, my seat, and there was a notice of liability. Interesting, that spoke to, this notice of liability is to alert you, if you are not already aware, that your participation in making available explicit or pornographic books to minors and/or facilitating in the exploitation and/or sexualization of minors is unlawful. That's just one phrase. I did research sexually explicit, and what comes up right away is the Criminal Code of Canada. So there is something we can go to that defines what sexually explicit material is. And and parents have had, so this, we've had several emails now. Parents finding books describing what they are, and it's very serious. And parents have concerns, and they've voiced these concerns and brought them, brought forward examples. And I would, I would ask how, how it is that these books would enhance, like, when, when I'm looking at the policy, and our first principles is that the Halton Catholic District School Board approves learning and library materials that support a quality education which integrates the Catholic faith and the teachings of the gospel with the school curriculum. I don't see how these books would, would fall under that criteria and in keeping with gospel values. I think children have a right to be protected from this material, and parents have the right to protect their children, especially in a school setting where the focus is on education and education for us aligned with the Catholic faith. So I'm proposing these amendments. I'd like to have some questions answered, but I propose this as, as a way to make sure that our libraries are going to be safe places of education for, for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. I shall now open up the floor to trustees for three minutes of questions. We will stick to questions only. Those questions go to staff, and then we'll finish that, and then we go to three minutes of debate, just like before. So I shall open up the floor, and we have trustee Murphy, you have the floor.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. Yeah, okay, so my question is to staff, whomever can respond. There seems to be an issue from what I can see from correspondence that I've received with the young adult novels. And so they're not graphic novels in the sense that they have images, but they're extremely explicit in their language. And so my question is, who's vetting these? It's pretty simple to Google the book and find out that it has explicit language. And so I'm just curious how they're getting into our libraries, and there's a lot of them.
Thank you. I'm going to pass this to director Klein.
Sure. Thank you. Good. I'm going to ask superintendent Crowe, because we do, we did this evening have a couple of our staff members here that might be able to help us in terms of responding to those questions. I think they're going to get set up right now, and, and hopefully this will give you a sense of what are the procedures around those decision points, so that might help clarify some things. And it might look very familiar to you from about a week, week or so ago. Thanks.
Good evening, good evening, trustees. I will reintroduce to you our manager of library services, Linda Murray, and our religion and family life consultant, Dr. Shad Ben, who are here to help me out this evening. I'll start by answering the question, say that there are, there are certainly resources that we bring into our schools where the decision is made at the board level or the ministry level with regards to things like textbooks. And then there are decisions made at the school level in terms of things like library collections.
Trustee Murphy?
Well, then, just, just to follow up, since, since we know for sure that there are sexually explicit young adult novels in our libraries right now, how are they, how did they get through? Like, what's the vetting process?
Superintendent Crowe?
Certainly, I can start. Like, in terms of the way that we develop our resources, there's a lot of training that librarians and library techs have before they come to us. Like, in order to get their, their certification, they go through, certainly through formal schooling. We have our own training as well that we put staff through. I would like to note that I'm not here to defend any text here tonight. What I will say is, there's a reason why the policy is written this way, and there's a reason why there's an opportunity for parents to bring concerns when they have concerns like you're raising about texts. Can I tell you that 100% for sure, every text is going to get, every book that we purchase is going to meet all of the expectations of all of our community members? No. But what I can say is, the policy was thoughtfully written to ensure that when a parent, as a community member, has a concern, there's a process which they can go through, which has multiple levels to have that concern addressed.
Yeah, and I, and I do appreciate that, that process is available, but I'm, my, my concern now at this point is, is there going to be a complete audit done to look through all of these, like, explicit books and, and remove them, or what, what's the next steps here?
Superintendent Crowe? Go ahead.
And you can take this one, it's okay. What I would say is, we follow our policy. And so if concerns are being raised, and I, trustees, honestly, I would ask that you help me. If parents have concerns, they should be following the policy and bringing them to the school where the, where the concern lies.
Yes, for the record, I have been directing parents to do that 100%. But, you know, in order to do my due diligence as a trustee, regardless of parents complaining or not, because let's face it, parents are busy.
Sure.
High school students check out books, and they don't show their parents when they get home what they're reading. They're sitting in their bedroom, reading these filthy books by themselves. And so my concern is, how do we pre, like, how do we preempt this or prevent this from happening, right? Like, so that's why I'm just saying, in my, I, I agree with Helena's amendments to this, you know, policy.
Superintendent Crowe?
If I can. So if we, if what you were saying is, if this was in place, would that trigger something like an audit?
That may be separate. I'm just thinking, if this was in place, at least moving forward, there'd be some sort of, you know, procedure that, that the staff, the senior staff could put in place to better screen particularly young adult novels, because they're known to be problematic.
I, I don't, sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, I don't disagree with you that that could be a consequence. I'll just give you my opinion, not having seen this language until 10 minutes ago. Anytime we're referencing the Criminal Code of Canada, it might be worth reconsidering. Like, I don't know if that's a change we necessarily want to make tonight. And I'm going to just, like, I think that we might need to be careful here because there could be unintended consequences when we're adding language that references things like the Criminal Code. And that's, listen, this is just my opinion, based on having seen this less than 10 minutes ago.
Yeah, I, I agree, that's, it might be better to bring it back to the policy. And then I guess this is a separate issue, like, I guess, I'll, I'll discuss with you after the meeting.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. Up next, we have trustee Ohan Chanara, you're the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, and listening to, looking at the amendment, listening to discussion, listening to superintendent Corolla and explaining the policy and the process and some of the comments that we made, I'd like to make a motion to refer back to policy.
Thank you. Trustee Ohan Chanara, this is question time. I like to go through, like, what we have, be consistent about the process all throughout. When we get to debate, we will make the motion to go back to.
Okay.
Okay, just because to keep it consistent and let's follow the system. So other trustees who are in line, just know that there's going to be a motion to move it back to policy. So if you want to put your hand down, that'll be great. Otherwise, we'll go over the questions. So I have trustee Saunders, I have trustee Vice Chair Agnew. Do you want to continue with questions, or do you want to go to debate directly and move the policy back to policy? Okay, so up next is Vice Chair Agnew, you're the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So thank you for that comment, trustee Ohan Chanara, because I don't, I don't want to dismiss any of the concerns that are here. And to superintendent Crowe's point, and I don't mean this to be flippant at all. I just, I truly believe in my heart that there's no staff that are purposely or even accidentally putting books that might be contravening the Criminal Code of Canada. So it is strong language. You know, I, I think there would be some procedural pieces we've just discussed that may go with an amendment like this. So I understand the spirit behind this, but because that is such, I mean, we're referencing a criminal, a criminal code now. So I do think it warrants further discussion. And perhaps this isn't the right wording, I don't know, but I think that's the kind of thing we would have to flesh out. Because, you know, it just, to me, that infers that that's being done, and I don't think that it's actually being done. So again, understanding the spirit behind it, understanding parental concern. Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanara, for perhaps suggesting that that might be something that, that we look at doing, and your comments are well, are well taken, too.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And I see trustee Boye, this is for questions, or is it debate here? So I have trustee Ohan Chanara. So with that, close question period and open up debate. Trustee Ohan Chanara, you're the floor.
You're assuming I remember. No, I'd like to put forth, and I'm trying to be serious, because this is a serious topic, I don't want to make light of it. So I'd like to put a motion to refer this policy back to the policy committee for further discussion, discernment, more information.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanara. So we have a motion to refer. We have a motion to refer to policy. And we need a mover, a second, and a majority vote, that it goes back. So trustee Ohan Chanara, you move?
I do.
Looking for a second, please? Saunders? Trustee Saunders? I shall open up. You're the floor to talk to that.
I, I, not much that I can say that we haven't already discussed. And we did have a fulsome discussion, there's been other things brought to light, there's been new information. So I think it's in our best interest to go and have another fulsome discussion at the next policy meeting, so we can do the right thing.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanara. I see no other hands up. I'll take it to a recorded vote. So we are voting to refer this policy back to the policy committee. It was moved by trustee Ohan Chanara, seconded by trustee Saunders.
Point of order, Mr. Chair, I have my hand up.
Yes. Sorry.
My hand is up.
Yeah, I called the vote because there was, there was a motion to move it back. There was a motion in the floor which was moved and seconded. We've got to deal with that motion first. If that doesn't succeed, then we come back to you. Okay, we went past that, but I'll give you the floor. Go ahead.
Sorry for the confusion. I, I just wanted to say that I don't, I'm not in favor of moving it back to policy either, because I don't think that there's been any concerns that have been raised by trustee Carabella that aren't addressed by the policy. We've, we've mentioned many times that the examples brought forward, the concerns brought forward are in contravention of the values already outlined within the policy. And the policy clearly defines that books must follow our gospel values. All of the things trustee Carabella acknowledged herself, that these books contravene the policy. And there's, there's a form within the policy for parents that are concerned to go and use, and we have a method of addressing that. And I'm concerned that any further efforts to define this type of material are problematic. Some of, some of the sexually explicit material that would be, you know, that would be in contravention to these amendments and these types of things are the books that you all studied in English class that we study in English class.
Trustees, trustees, you do not have the floor. Order, order! Trustee Boye, you're the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also just categorically want to disagree with something that was brought up earlier that was an allegation that the board is facilitating the exploitation of children. That's, I think, categorically problematic for us to mention in this boardroom. It's never been an experience that I've had in our libraries, in our classrooms. And I, I just wanted to speak to my experience with that. I think that the policy as is addresses these concerns. I'm not defending any of this material as is. I think that it should be addressed, but the policy as is addresses that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, trustee Boye. And with that, I have called the vote on referring this policy back to the policy committee, moved by trustee Ohan Chanara, seconded by trustee Saunders. Trustee Kelly?
Could you come back to me?
Sorry, I
Could you come back to me, sorry?
Okay. Trustee Chua?
Opposed.
Trustee Boye?
Opposed.
Trustee Kuzma?
Opposed.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell? Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanara? Trustee Agnew? Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Opposed.
We have seven in favor. One opposed, no abstention, motion carries. This policy will be moved back to the policy committee, meaning for further discussions and deliberations. Thank you. Thank you, trustee superintendent Crowe. Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanara. So with that, we shall move on to our next order of business, which is staff reports. There are no staff There are no staff reports today. Our next order of business is information items. Item 11.1, Student Trustee Update. Student trustees, please present your report.
Thinking through you, Mr. Chair. So I'll be starting off with the Achieving section. So starting off, in the last few weeks, students have been preparing for exams and culminates, which have been taking place for all classes. Some schools, like Corpus Christi, where I go, have held study halls for groups of students to use their lunchtime to study together, which has been a great resource for many students. Additionally, as the school year begins to die down, many schools are holding end-of-year barbecues and other events to celebrate their students and their achievements. Thanks.
And I will be taking on the Believing section. So as well, we want to give a huge shout out to many of our schools who have just finished their Relay for Life campaigns. These campaigns are student-led fundraisers for the Canadian Cancer Society, and have demonstrated the incredible leadership skills of many of our students in coordinating the planning of these events. Christ the King, in particular, in Georgetown, raised over $143,000 over the course of one single month. These students have demonstrated leadership, community, and have put our Catholic faith in action for a great cause. Congratulations to CTK.
And I will be covering our Belonging section. So we want to end our last Student Trustee Report of the Year by sharing that we celebrated our last Senate meeting, a very bittersweet occasion of the year last Thursday, in which we had leaving, returning, and new senators in attendance. We celebrated our accomplishments together this past year, gathered feedback for next year, and had one last opportunity to meet as a community and began the exciting process of planning for next year. We want to give a huge congratulations to all of the new incoming senators for the 2023-2024 school year, as well, a huge congratulations to our newly-elected lead senators for each school and committee chairs for our six committees. I cannot wait to see what they accomplish in their positions of leadership and what the Senate accomplishes as a whole next year. We want to finally sign off by recognizing the efforts of the amazing students and staff on Senate this year that have contributed to our work this past year. We could not have done it without them, truly. Especially to our senators that are leaving, who are graduating, and Ms. Ellison, Mr. Busby, Ms. Seraphim, and Ms. Taylor, our staff advisors for their support. They have been instrumental in keeping this very large, very complicated group running, so we truly couldn't have done it without them. Thank you to you all for your contributions. And then, as it is Brady and myself's last board meeting, we'd just like to close with some informal thanks and recognition. For me, this is my last board meeting of two years. So I'm very, it's very bittersweet. This is where I've been every other Tuesday for the past two years. I was telling someone in the hallway that I've been a student trustee longer than I attended in-person high school. So it's a pretty significant portion of my life. It truly has been an honor and a privilege, so I hope you'll forgive me if I talk a little bit longer again, as you've heard me talk for the past two years, to give a huge thank you to everyone who is, who is the reason why I'm here. I've been a part of this system for the past 14 years of my life. I started junior kindergarten here, and now I'm graduating. I truly am here because of the HCSB. This system taught me to be a kind, contributing, passionate member of my community. And it was the staff and the students who came before me and along the way who helped me get here. First, to the student trustees that I met when I was a kid, and all of those that have come before me, you have been a role model and of dedication and hard work to me that has kept me going over the past two years. And in particular, I wouldn't be here without all of the staff that encouraged me, made me feel valued, encouraged, and heard throughout the past 14 years. There was my elementary school librarian, who in giving me my first-ever leadership role in the third grade, was the first person to believe in me. There was my elementary school government teacher in the fifth grade, and my elementary school principal, who, when I expressed concern about our single-use plastic at curriculum night, actually listened to me and made the change. And then my VPs at Loyola, Ms. Ellison, who was the VP at the time that I became a student trustee and is the reason why I'm here, and Mr. Busby, who has put up with me and a lot of, a lot of me since. And I just wanted to say that, as I leave, this has been one of the greatest experiences of my life. Thank you to you all around the board table. Thank you to all of the staff who have put up with me and taught me more than I could ever learn in a classroom. You all have truly changed who I am as a person, and I just want to leave with my parting ask that you do what you did for me for every student in our system. I'm here because of the system, because I felt heard, because I felt encouraged, because at every step of the way, there were people that believed in me. And over the past two years, I've tried to make sure that that happens for every student in our board. So I ask you all to keep that up, because this truly, I'm proud to be a student of the HCSB. I am a student of the HCSB, and I forever will be. So thank you, and keep up the great work.
Thank you, Trustee Boy, Trustee Kuzma, and Trustee Chua for your presentation, especially, big thanks.
Can I pass it off to Brady for his closing remarks?
I was going to spoil that. Trustee, Brady, go ahead.
I don't know how I could follow Katie up. I also wrote this recoiling after my physics exam, so it's not the best-written thing, blaming my physics teacher. Just to start, it's been an absolutely incredible opportunity to work with so many amazing students at the Senate and the trustees and superintendents of the board. A year ago, I knew basically nothing about how a school board works. I heard about the position through my principal, who emailed me and said, hey, you should do this. And I'm really glad that I did, because in the last 12 months, I have really just gained so many incredible experiences, made so many amazing connections, met so many awesome people, and seen so many of the wonderful things that our board does for all of their students. I would like to thank every trustee, superintendent, board staff, teacher, every, everyone who works at our board for everything that you do for all the students on the board, and for what you've done for me, for Katie, for Ari, for everybody. And I want to wish the incoming student trustees and the returning student trustee Ari, just, I don't even know how to word this, it's just, you guys are gonna have a great time in the HCSB. You've, I've been here for 14 years, and it's been absolutely incredible. All the things that you guys have taught me, everything that I've learned, everything that has made me who I am today is because of the HCSB, and I just wanted to thank everybody. And I know it's not as momentum as Katie's, but thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you. And with that, I will open up the floor to trustees for questions. I see Trustee Ohan Chanara, your hand up, you're the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, and to our student trustees. I just wanted to say it has been a privilege, you've made me a better trustee. Don't start, okay? I haven't cried in this boardroom once, and you're gonna make me, but thank you for being our connection to the student body. Thank you for that. Thank you for sometimes telling us things that we didn't want to hear. And thank you for sometimes being the only adults in the room at the time when you were saying it. I truly appreciate it. You will all go on to do bigger, better things. I told you I'd run your campaign, I'll run your company, and next year I'll do whatever you need me to do, but you're a blessing, you're God's gift, and I truly appreciate it, and you make us better every day. Hashtag be better. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee, Trustee Ohan Chanara. Up next is Trustee Kelly, you're the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Just a comment, and I remember being a student trustee, I know how hard and busy the role is, balancing school, and also doing this, coming every night, not knowing if it's going to extend past 11 or not, and then worrying about culminating his exam, applying universities, I know the struggle. And honestly, the fact that you guys come every day, I was only during COVID, and you are so brave. Like, every year, I feel like I'm seeing always amazing different students coming from all over our region, and it's so beautiful seeing you guys thrive, and you're gonna go far. And you're going to do, and you are already doing amazing things, so thank you so much for being here today. And, you know, best of luck.
Thank you. I see no other trustees' hands up, so I want to thank Trustee Boy, Trustee Kuzma, and Trustee Chua, you're going to be returning, so, Elmo, thanks. But I want to thank you for the student voice that you brought to the table over the past years. Really appreciate hearing the positive side as well as the negative side. And so it's been a pleasure working with you all, and we'll continue the pleasure next year. And I get the opportunity to thank you on behalf of all the trustees and sign a letter for you, so thank you so much, and all the best to you all. Okay? Thank you. So with that, we move on to our next item, 11.2, Director's Report. Director Klein, please present your report.
I'll pack the follow. It's a fairly brief update as we conclude the school year. And we'll start with everyone's favorite four-letter word, EQAO. EQAO has wrapped up in the last month and a half in our schools. And as many parents and many trustees will know, this reflects assessments that are done in key milestone periods, grades three, grade six, and grade nine, and then our literacy, which is OSSLT in grade 10. It's important to know that all of these assessments are rooted in the Ontario Curriculum Documents. So these are specific to Ontario and measures the mastery of skills within those areas. And as the curriculum changes, the tests change as well. EQAO assessments have concluded for this year, and they'll be independently reviewed and graded over the summer. Results arrive in the fall, thereabouts, and will be used by schools and the board to create improvement plans for the schools, improvement plans for the boards. And this does help with teachers as well in terms of better understanding the students themselves.
This is our faith activities. Faith activities in our board. We have the following that we could highlight. Again, they reflect the theological themes that we have, which is, what does the Lord require of you but to do justice? Love, kindness, and walk humbly with our God. And a few of the examples of faith in action through the last month or so. Start with June 1st prayer services with the raising of the rainbow flag. St. Thomas Aquinas eco-team cultivated the school grounds in response to Laodado Sea. St. Ignatius of Loyola's fundraising of food and baby products for family services in First Nations communities. There was a shared fundraiser between St. Thomas Aquinas and St. Matthew's Parish to support a girls' school in Kenya. Christ the King, $100,000 was raised for Relay for Life. Notre Dame, students continue to support Canadian Food for Children. St. Christopher's Burlington opened doors, St. Vincent de Paul at St. Gabriel and St. Paul parishes. Many schools, secondary and elementary, have been involved in activities focusing on the Sacred Heart of Jesus, including praying the novena to the Sacred Heart of Jesus as provided by ICE, the Institute for Catholic Education. Communities have been united in grateful prayer as masses and liturgies of the Word to celebrate graduations at both elementary and secondary schools have been held. Many trustees here have been part of those celebrations. At St. Kateri, the training of students to be lecturers and extraordinary ministers of the Eucharist with culminating, culmination in school mass. High school retreats have been completed as we've wound down the year. Development in Peace, which we know is part of Caritas International. Club involvement at the Hamilton Diocesan Virtual Film Justice, DNP Real Justice Film Festival took place. Secondary Schools GSA Retreat made connections to the Sacred Heart and helped many students feel accepted and welcome. I was very glad to be a part of that. Corpus Christi focused on novena prayers, liturgy for the IIL staff at Merton, on the feast of St. Anthony of Padua. Materials have been sent out to schools for prayer service on June 21st, tomorrow. National Indigenous Peoples' Day. Students at St. Thomas Aquinas grew mustard plants from seed, which they continue to nurture, clearly making connections to the biblical story, gospel story. This was shared with some of the trustees last week. I thought it was topical and important to share. So this Director of Education is one with over 70 other Directors of Education who are French, English, part of the public system, part of the Catholic system, and together they make up what's known as the Council of Directors of Education, or CODE. And CODE recently wrote a op-ed that was on their website. And there's a link there, and I, trustees certainly have it, and I would encourage others to see it, take a look at it, because it does reflect, I think, the tenor of the times in Ontario's publicly-funded schools. The article appeals for what's known as what they call a return to civility within boardrooms and digital forums. This is not to point at this board, it's, I think, to reflect what we all see in the news around us recently and over the last year or more as well, sad to say. Considering recent incidents, I think, though, it comes to mind. One section that resonated from this op-ed goes as follows. "The Directors of Education in Ontario affirm in their resolve to support, protect, and validate the human rights and dignities of all students and staff. This includes all marginalized communities, indigenous, Black, racialized, those with special learning requirements and disabilities, those who live in poverty, and those who identify as 2SLGBTQ+. This is not a political agenda. This is government bodies protecting charter of rights of all people." Finally, we march forward with our MYSP creation. The Multi-Year Strategic Plan Consultation Survey continues, and right now we are about a week or so away from finishing the consultation survey. The annual Multi-Year Strategic Plan Monitoring Survey is currently in the field and is open until June 30th. Tweeted and sent out reminders for parents and others to be, to take advantage of that. To date, we've heard, this is about a week old, over 500 stakeholders, and we'll continue to send this out to the community. The MYSP consultation survey is, of course, voluntary, and it's confidential. And the feedback received will be analyzed by facilitators over the summer from Maximum City, and we're all aware that that's the the organization that is helping us create and fashion this new MYSP. Be glad to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Director Klein, for your report. Trustees, do we have questions for Director Klein? Vaishir?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Not so much a question, just a comment. I'm not sure if it was a typo, Director Klein, or maybe an oversight, but you mentioned that June 1st was prayer along with the rainbow flag. It's actually the pride flag, or more specifically, in some of our schools, the progress flag. So I think, given the piece that you spoke to around belonging, I think it's imperative that we actually reference those for what they are called, as opposed to calling it a rainbow flag. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is Trustee Carabella, you're the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a question from the previous board meeting, and I, I'm sorry I didn't alert you, Director Klein. You were going to get back to me about the numbers of attendance on June 1st. Then I thought with June 14th, the Pride Day and the Pride Awareness Day.
Yes, I recollect that question, yeah. Director Klein can.
Sorry, I don't have that with me right now, sorry.
Can we make a note of it somewhere? We need to provide that information. Okay, thank you. Any other questions, trustees, for Director Klein? Singnan, thank you, Director Klein, for presenting your report. And while you're presenting your report, I just want to to say a big thank you to Superintendent Rosini out there for all the wonderful work that you have done. Thank you for helping us out. And we really appreciate the good work that you've done, and thank you so much. Okay, we really appreciate. Have a nice summer, and we'll see you soon. Thank you. We shall now move on down to item 11.3. 2022-23 Budget Report, third quarter, September 1st, May 31st, 2023. Superintendent Laufs, please present your report.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Please find attached our 2223 Budget Report ending May 31st, 2023. Adam Cross or I are available to answer any questions relating to this. We are in line with our expenditures as well as our revenue for this period.
Trustees, do we have any questions for Superintendent Laufs? Trustee Carabella, your hand is up, I think, for the previous item, right? I'll take it down. Trustees, do we have questions for Superintendent Laufs? I don't see a hand up here. Okay, Trustee Kennedy, you're the floor.
I just want to ask you, Ken, about summer school. So we don't have any in-person this year. I don't know what category that's necessarily under. I know we're a smaller board, but the, our. I know we're a smaller board, but the, our co-terminus board has, you know, they, they have canceled some classes, to be fair. But they do have a lot of, especially math classes online. And this is just because I did hear from a parent, it's only one example, I don't like to, it's not a trend, but one, one parent was mentioning that their child, they believe, learns much better, especially with math in person, than asynchronous, right? So, and then I did hear some reports that they weren't necessarily guaranteed, you know, transportation. Whereas that board does guarantee transportation. So they're actually going to go to that board to study math in the summer. So I just, I just want to know, like, is there, was it, was there a trans, was transportation guaranteed? And, you know, we are, we do have a declining enrollment and I just don't want to see more students, you know, pushed away into the other board. Maybe they, they might not come back.
Superintendent Lauts?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Kennedy. Maybe I'll hand it over to trustee, or sorry, Superintendent Del Sordo.
Thank you and through you, Chair. Trustee Kennedy, we do provide transportation for students face to face. That's never actually been the question, that in fact, there are three different locations so that we can serve the students. Where we do not provide transportation, because it's just not only physically or fiscally responsible, is also the fact that we'd have to start at six in the morning if kids want to get up to be picked up in Burlington, picked up in Oakville, picked up in Georgetown, and then brought to Milton site. So that's where we had said, we can't provide transportation. So if kids still wanted to do face to face, at most, we would have 176 kids in one site. That would also, as I indicated in the email, mean that we'd have to hire a principal, we'd have to hire us office staff, and we have to hire a guidance counselor and have someone who's first trained, as well as do a number of all the other health and safeties like fire alarm, fire drills and all that. So when I explained all that in the email, the point was, we can't afford to run it for 176 kids, at most, 176 kids. So the question of offering kids face to face with transportation has always been the case. But what we can't offer is a place where we're picking up kids at all hours in the morning to be brought into one location because the commitment won't be there. So that's what's happened.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy.
What did we do in past years? Did we provide transportation at all hours of the morning to, to get students there? Or is this like a new, is this the first year ever we've only had online, like ever?
And through you, Chair, no, this is not the first year. As I brought a report before, that 80% of the kids who were surveyed said they preferred online. And we still said, okay, we'll see what's out there is interest. And the interest again shows you that clearly the kids were online learning in Haltin Catholic. And to answer your question about transportation, before online summer school, there was always transportation. So I'm going to say it one more time, like we have done in the past, we've always provided transportation. So kids were picked up and brought to a location. So there would have been a number of different pickup spots to make sure that the kids had a reasonable time to get to those locations. Or it would be in one or two locations. So that's always been the case, that's always been the model, and that would be the model if there were kids who were interested in it. I need to stress again, 176 kids at most to have that transportation cost is not fiscally responsible.
So, thank you.
So essentially what I'm hearing is our, because our board is smaller, I mean, Haltin students are Haltin students. It's not that the public students really want in person more than maybe a Catholic student, but it might just be that we're too small to be able to afford that transportation because we have a lower amount of students?
Through you, Chair, I'm not sure. Transportation has never been an issue, so I'm not sure how else to say that to you. So it's not that we're smaller, it's not that we're this. If we had face to face and the enrollment was there, we would provide the transportation. What I'm saying to you is, where there's no transportation, it's because we have one location, which would be Milton, because that's the largest number. We'd have 170 kids, which we stem from Burlington, Oakville, and Georgetown that need to be picked up and brought into Milton. So that's the point that's, what we're saying to, doesn't make fiscal responsibility, right? So the point that we need to really think about is the interest, the majority of interest. So if you're buying investments, for example, you don't put money in a stock that you think is going to go, but you put money in a stock that you see is going to grow. And the kids are telling us that they would like online learning. And so that's what we're offering them, to the point of 3,000 of our kids are doing it. And that's, and that's the interest of our students.
Thank you. Up next, trustee Saunders.
Yeah, I just had a quick question, just looking at our comparables. And we law, like our provincial grants from last year down about 6 million, about 68%. I don't recall us losing any particular grants. Can you just sort of give me a highlight of what that's all about?
Superintendent Lauts, last three.
Put my mic on, the revenue side, correct? Okay, if we go and look at, there's a number that should be beside it. I'm just going to scroll to it. So there's number one under legislative grants, so I'm assuming that's where you're looking at, or? Okay, and then on a couple pages down, legislative grants increased due to funding in '22 to '23 compared to '21 due to learning recovery fund and use of deferred revenues. So is that, that's actually gone. It's, that's not the one, I guess you're talking, you're not talking about legislative grants then, right? You're looking at, which one? Oh, the revenue, Government of Canada Grants? Yeah? Okay. Okay, I'm looking, sorry. Yeah, on the revenue side, right?
Through, through you, Mr. Chair. Aaron, he's talking about PPFs.
PPFs, okay, thank you. Yeah, PPFs are, are different. They're based on, and thank you, thank you, Adam. PPFs are very different. Trustee Saunders, it's dependent upon the year and they change year over year. So it won't necessarily be the same that we have there almost one year. I thought you were talking about legislative grants and looking there, you're talking about PPFs. So our PPFs would be different year over year depending on what's, what's available to us or what's, what's been allocated to us provincially.
Trustee Saunders? And they're sort of tied to specific programs? So this would mean that we, we're not running the same program or, or I'm just sort of getting an idea of what happened here? Such a dramatic.
So the P, sorry, the PPFs would be based on, we have a TP, a transfer payment agreement for all our PPFs that we have to spend on, on certain, with the requirements of those PPF grants are priorities and partnership funding, which used to be EPOs for, for those who remember. So they're kind of new each year, or at least renewed each year by the province. So it's, it's a matter of not so much the revenue going down, it's what the provinces allocated.
Just to, through you, Mr. Chair, just to add some context. So last year at this time, we were receiving a significant PPF related to COVID. For 2022, 2023, the ministry actually rolled that PPF into the GSN. So you're seeing a decrease on this PPF, other provincial grants line, but you'll also see an increase in our legislative grants line because that funding has been moved into the GSN.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Saunders. We are going to move on down to the next item. 11.4 Capital Project Reports, third quarter, September 1st to May 31st, 2023. Superintendent Lauts, please present your report.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, and to the trustees. We are pleased to present the 2223 Capital Project Report, ending May 31st, 2023. Adam Cross or I, or even Superintendent Merrick, are available to answer any questions pertaining to our capital projects.
Thank you, Superintendent Lauts. Trustee Saunders, is your hand up there from last, from before? Okay. Okay, thank you. I do not see any other hands up. We are going to move on to item 11.5 Student Census. Dr. Collimore, please present your report.
Good evening and through you, Mr. Chair. Nick and I are here tonight to, to provide the Board of Trustees with.
Can, can we, hold on, can we have the report up between? Yeah, sorry to interrupt, please proceed.
So through you, Mr. Chair, the purpose of Nick and my report tonight is to provide the Board of Trustees with an update of the analyses that have been conducted using the data from the student census and various historical student achievement measurements. Recall that data collected through the student census is intended to help us understand the students that we serve and to verify and assess any gaps and systemic disparities that affect students' experiences and outcomes. In our last report in March, we summarized the demographic breakdown of the HDSV student population. And we also analyzed differences in their perceptions about their school experiences. In the current report, we have used the student census again, but now we are examining disproportionality of student achievement outcomes. You will note that a disproportionality is a measure of a group's overrepresentation or underrepresentation of program or outcome compared to the overall population. This analytic approach is in line with the anti-racism data standards, which requires us as a school board to conduct these types of analyses to see, or nor, in order to better understand systemic inequities. In our report, the two student achievement measures that were used were report card marks and EQAO assessment results. And both of these were from the 2021, 2022 school year. These measures were chosen after examining the best practices that have been done in other school boards that are also reporting these types of disproportionality and/or disparities, and after consulting with HDSV staff and students. You will note, though, that both of these measures of student achievement are quite different. And they, so report card marks represent student achievement over a long period of time, while the EQAO assessment represents a snapshot in time of a single assessment. So I'm actually going to turn it over to Nick, who's going to walk you through the appendix, which is included in your package.
All right, thank you. Elizabeth, can you go to page 147, please? Start there. So just to kind of outline, like Dr. Collimore mentioned, what we're showing you today are disproportionality indices. And so really what I'm going to be showing you are charts that all look a lot like this. So just page, if you go up two pages. Two more pages, sorry. I think our page numbers are a bit off. One more page. Okay, so that's perfect right there. So what you're going to see is a series of charts that look like this. These are really meant to give you kind of an overview of what we're looking at. But the disproportionality index, what we're doing is we're comparing the percentage of each group meeting a positive outcome, that's meeting levels three or four, that's 70 and above, in English, math, or an EQAO, with the percentage of the population. So if a, if a bar is gray and has the number one on it, that means there is no disproportionality. That means that the proportion meeting standards is exactly equal to the proportion of the population. If a bar is orange and above that dotted line that shows you one, that means that there is a overrepresentation of that group within the positive outcomes. If it's blue and below that dotted line, what that means is that there's a negative disproportionality, which means that there's fewer students than you would expect for that group meeting provincial standards. And in general, what we're looking at here is the further distance from one, the greater the disproportionality. In general, anything around sort of between point oh five is kind of considered not too great of a disproportionality. Anything more than point 10 is a bigger disproportionality. And so another note too, as we go into this, this is just a single year. It's just 20, 2020, 2021, or rather, 21, 22 school year. And this is also meant just for descriptive data. So this is kind of, as we stated before, the beginnings of our sort of larger analysis, where we're going to look at how all these things kind of intersect with each other. So if we go to the next page, we'll see our first analysis, which were our English marks broken down by identity. And what we see when we look at these charts are really a pretty clear pattern as we move through it, which is that for our students who were born in and outside of Canada, we really don't see much of a difference at all. Similarly, for our elementary school students who are either Catholic, other forms of Christian, or additional religions, we also don't see much of a difference. Where we do see these kinds of patterns of difference, which kind of vary in how big they are, are gender identity, where we see girls outperforming boys at 1.03 here for elementary English marks compared to boys who underperform at 0.98. And then we see much larger disproportionality when we look at our students with disabilities compared to our students without disabilities. So we see here, our students with disabilities have a negative disproportionality of 0.81, while our students without disabilities hover right at that proportional mark at 1.01. We also see a very similar pattern when we look at race, where we see slight differences of overrepresentation for our students who are East Asian, South Asian, and multiple races, and a slight underrepresentation in positive outcomes for our students who are Black, Latino, Middle Eastern, whereas our Southeast Asian and white students hover right at the proportional mark there. If we go to the next page, we'll see the grade three EQAO English marks. We see it's broken down by reading, writing, and then English marks on the top left. And you see a little bit of a difference when we look at report card marks in that far left column and the EQAO results when we look at the right column, where we see those differences between boys and girls get greater when we look at EQAO. And then when we look at place of birth, again, there's a little bit more of a discrepancy here than we saw previously. Again, this is just a single grade, a single snapshot of a test. Similarly, when we look at religion, we begin to see some more differences. But we do see that same pattern when we look at race, which is a underrepresentation for our Black students in marks in grade three, and an overrepresentation for our students of East Asian, or rather, South Asian and Southeast Asian descent. And this is kind of made even more clear when we look at EQAO results there, where we see our students sort of level out a little bit, but we do see increased overrepresentation for our South Asian students, in particular, when we look at EQAO reading and writing. On the next page, we'll look at grade six EQAO results. And again, you see this very similar pattern. Girls continue to outperform boys in grade six, not by much, just at 1.03, 1.04, when we look at report card marks, reading and writing. But when we look at students with disabilities, that's where we continue to see this quite a large discrepancy there. So it's 0.89 for our students with disabilities, 0.72 when we look at EQAO, EQAO reading. And for EQAO writing, there's not enough numbers there to give you the results. When we look at born in Canada, again, pretty close to proportionate there. And similarly to religion, the numbers kind of stay in that proportionate area. And again, when we look at race, we see the same pattern of underrepresentation for our Black students, overrepresentation in positive outcomes for our East Asian, Southeast Asian students. Though in EQAO writing, you'll notice it's, everybody other than our East Asian and white students is underrepresented. If we turn to elementary math marks, which is the next page there, this is again, the combination of all grades one through eight math marks. We see a little bit of a different pattern here. We see boys and girls come out to be even there, similar to additional gender identities, right at proportionate. Again, students with disabilities, we see quite a large discrepancy there compared to their colleagues without disabilities, born in Canada, not much of a difference, similar to religion. And again, the same pattern when we look at race. There's underrepresentation of Black students, overrepresentation of East Asian, South Asian. And then when we look at math, we also have Southeast Asian and Middle Eastern students as well. This pattern continues on the next page when we look at grade three math EQAO, where we see our boys are slightly outperforming girls on math marks and by quite a bit on EQAO math results. So boys are overrepresented in positive math outcomes. Place of birth, we don't see much of a difference for marks, but we do see quite a big difference for those born outside of Canada as being positively overrepresented here at 1.14 in EQAO math. And for religion, we see a little bit of a mixed bag. But again, when we look at race, we see a very similar pattern here with underrepresentation for our Black and Latino students, overrepresentation for South Asian students in particular. If we go to the next slide, we can see grade six math. And really, it's, it's the same story as the previous slide, where we have the same pattern. In math, boys are doing slightly better than girls. And when we look at race, we see again, these same patterns of underrepresentation and overrepresentation of success for our students. If we go down to the next slide, we'll turn to our secondary findings, which are a little bit different and you'll see some patterns continue throughout, however. And this is secondary English marks, so this is all grade nine through 12 marks combined. We see that our female students, 1.05, are overrepresented here in positive outcomes compared to their male counterparts. And we see a much smaller discrepancy here between students with disabilities and without. So students with disabilities for secondary English are just at 0.93. Place of birth, we see for the first time, a small discrepancy. Place of birth, we see for the first time a small discrepancy here between those born in Canada and those born outside of Canada. And for religion, really, everybody is right hovering around proportional there, all around 0.98 to 0.101. However, when we look at race, we see this patterning, this pattern continuing from the previous slides, where we see an under-representation in successful outcomes for our Black students at 0.88, an over-representation of positive outcomes for our East Asian students at 1.05, and South Asian students at 1.03. Going to the next slide, we'll see grade nine, or rather, grade 10 English versus grade 10 OSSLT. And you'll see, again, the same pattern, girls outperforming boys, students with disabilities underperforming their colleagues without disabilities, quite a bit less in OSSLT than they have in English. As well, place of birth, we see quite similar. And we also see these patterns when we look at race as well. This continual pattern of students who are Black underrepresented in successful outcomes and over, kind of slight over-representations of success for some other students in groups such as South Asian and East Asian. On the next slide, we'll look at math findings for our secondary students. So this is all grades nine through 12 math. And again, we'll see, we'll see the same similar pattern we saw in English, where girls slightly outperforming boys in secondary math. Students with disabilities and students without disabilities, much closer here in secondary than they were in elementary. No real difference between those born in Canada, born outside of Canada, and other religions. But again, the same pattern when we look at race, under-representation for some groups such as our Black students, Latino students, and over-representation for our East Asian, South Asian, and multiple racial students here. On the next slide, we'll see grade nine from last year compared to last year's EQAO results. And you'll see very similar pattern, though interestingly, there are some differences between math marks and math EQAO. In particular, boys do better on EQAO proportionally than they do in their math marks, though only slightly. And our students with disabilities, again, for just grade nine, are quite a bit lower than our students with disabilities when it comes to successful outcomes in math. When we look at religion, we don't see much of a difference there, other than a real under-representation for students of additional religion. So these are students who don't fit into the other categories of Muslim, no affiliation, Roman Catholic, or other Christians. And again, a very similar pattern when we look at race, with a pronounced over-representation in successful outcomes for our East Asian students in particular, and our South Asian, Southeast Asian, and Middle Eastern students on the EQAO. So with that, I will hand it over to Dr. Collmore.
So, thanks, Nick. So as was illustrated in the report, there was a lot of blue, there was a lot of orange. And so this indicates to us that there are disproportionality that are emerging when it comes to student achievement outcome measures that we looked at. Our plan is to dig deeper, to better understand and verify these patterns using other additional data sources that we have available to us. At this point, though, the research team continues to share these results with various departments here at CEC, including Program Services and Human Rights Equity Departments and across our system. And really, our next steps are to help these teams better understand the data that we are sharing with them, and to, like I said, dig deeper and add additional data and results to the report so that they can, you know, better plan and prepare their services and programs. With respect to our next steps, we will continue to use the census data that we've collected to examine other patterns in other areas of interest. So the next one that we're going to be focusing on are in the area of student health, wellbeing, and engagement. And so further updates will be coming in the future. So, thanks for your attention.
Thank you, Dr. Lombardo and Dr. Collmore. We have a housekeeping item to do. It's 11 o'clock, so we'll stop and come back to you. We need to extend trustees from 11 to 11:30. May I ask for someone to move that we extend to 11:30?
I'll move it.
Trustee O'Hern Chanara. Second, please. Sorry. Trustee Agnew. I'll take this to a recorded vote. Trustee Carabella.
Oh, in favor.
Trustee Powell.
I'm in favor.
I know, we had a long day. We are meeting from 5:00 PM today. So, trustee Kennedy.
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Chanara.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy. Trustee Saunders.
Opposed.
Really opposed? Okay, sorry, I could. Trustee Kelly.
In favor.
Sorry, in favor? Okay, I know trustees are tired. Trustee Chua.
In favor.
Trustee Boyd.
In favor.
Trustee Kuzma.
In favor.
We have, trustee Duarte is in favor. Three, four, five, six, and we have eight in favor, one opposed. Abstention motion carries. We are now extended to 11:30. So coming back to Dr. Collmore and Dr. Lombardo, thank you so much for your presentation. Trustees, do we have questions for Dr. Collmore and Dr. Lombardo? Trustee Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. So I just, my understanding is EQAO, is this the second year that EQAO is done online? Can anyone answer that? Just because I'm wondering how this information was captured. Is it captured at the end of the child doing their EQAO, they're asked a series of questions at the end of it? Is that how it works?
Question to Director Klein to start. Director Klein.
Sorry, the question was, is this the second year that this was done online?
Probably, it's a two-parter. Let me clarify. So the first thing is, I'm just wondering how the information is captured. Like, my understanding is EQAO is done on a computer now, right? Like, it's not done pen and paper. So is this how we're gathering the information from the students? Like, at the end of the EQAO, they answer some questions about?
The questionnaire?
Yes.
That we've had for many years. I'll turn it over to-
Okay, so it was paper and pencil before? It was just, nothing has changed?
Yeah. Yeah, and they have questions that have been sort of consistent through 20-plus years.
Sure. So do we have any, I'm just curious about EQAO now being all done on a computer. Do we have any comparables in terms of the, you know, when it was done pen and paper versus when it's gone completely online?
I'm going to turn over to Superintendent Crowell. One of the other factors that's changed is that there were some curricular changes in the middle, not only format change, but math, as an example, the curriculum changed fairly significantly as well. But I'll turn it over to Superintendent Crowell.
Certainly, and through you, Chair, was that, we were at a session in the fall where EQAO was releasing data. So the sort of first data that we've had in a number of years. And they were very careful to make sure that people that were there understood that we're not to be making comparisons to previous year's data, that this is new baseline data for a number of reasons. One, the format has changed. As you noted, trustee Murphy, it is now an online format. Two, there have been curriculum changes, which have led to testing changes. So they've said, it wouldn't make sense for you to be making, looking back to make comparator data, but you should certainly use this as a baseline to make, to sort of to look forward. And that's what we'll certainly be doing when we get next year's results. As Director Klein noted in his director's update, you know, we've just completed the process of EQAO data for this year, and we'll be looking to get that. The grade nine results come individually to students soon. And then the, sort of, the board results will be getting, I would expect, sort of, early, late, late summer to early fall.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Murphy, follow-up. Next up, trustee O'Hern Chanara, you have your hand up. You have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, to Dr. Collmore. Just a clarification, you said the next sentence was student health, wellbeing. Was there another word? Engagement. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Dr. Collmore and Dr. Lombardo. Really appreciate your presentation. I see trustee Kennedy, you have your hand up. You have the floor.
Thank you. I just have a question about the grade three, like, grade, just grade three in particular. How do we find out information about, maybe I missed it again, grade threes? Are they asked the question themselves, or do the parents answer the question for the grade threes?
Dr. Collmore.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So for the student census, I assume is what you're asking about. So for any students that were in K to eight, the parent filled the census survey out with the child or on behalf of the child.
Thank you. So I didn't miss it. You mentioned about digging deeper. Do you have, like, a range? I believe the gentleman I mentioned was point one. Heard the number point one. Is, like, if there's a number that's like 1.01 and 0.99, is that a big enough disparity for you to dig deeper? Or do you have, like, a, you know what I mean? Like, is there a certain number of, that entails digging deeper, and a smaller number doesn't? What's that number?
Dr. Collmore.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Nick.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Kennedy. So basically, every, every disproportionality is, represents a real disproportionality. But typically, anything between like 0.05 to 0.10 is something where, for us, given our response rates on the student census, we would really start to look at seriously. So any of the ones that are, you know, 0.01 to 0.99, something like that, is, you know, something not too concerning to see. But if it's, if it's, you know, 0.103 to 0.96, being between the two groups we're comparing, that would be something we would want to start looking into. Because it's not just the disproportionality to that one, but also how they compare to one another within those groups that we would want to look at.
Thank you for your questions. We will move on. Next up, we have, next item is 11.6. Thank you, Dr. Collmore and Dr. Lombardo. Really appreciate it. It's getting late and I'm forgetting things. So next up, item 11.6, construction reports. Superintendent Merrick, please present your report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. We have construction updates on three projects, the first being Milton Number Three Secondary School. You can see in the photos there, masonry work continues. The second floor is going to go on in the next couple of weeks. And we have a lot of slabs now poured on grade, and the work there is generally progressing very well. Next up is the Milton Number Nine Elementary School. The site here was, was very muddy back in the spring, is dried out now, and a lot of masonry work ongoing. And again, slab on grade, and expecting the first floor precast panels to show up in the middle of July. So we'll sort of see that take shape in the middle of July. And then lastly, we have the North Oakville Number Four Elementary School site. Masonry work here on the elementary, or on the kindergarten wing is nearly complete. The first floor precast is already on the kindergarten wing as well, and then the masonry work is starting on the gym now. So that's moving along very well as well. So happy to take any questions that trustees may have on those three construction projects.
Thank you, Superintendent Merrick. Trustees, do we have questions for Superintendent Merrick? Saying none, thank you, Superintendent Merrick, for your report. Really appreciate it, as usual. With that, we shall move on down to our next order of business, which is open question period. Director Klein, do we have questions submitted?
We do. We have questions that came in by mail. I don't think Chair and I have had necessarily a lot of time to be able to vet them and see if they meet the criteria. We had one from last week, I think we started at the, that we did send a reply to, and should be in the minutes, right? I think that was discussed at the start.
So, Director Klein, I have a bunch of questions here with me. Question period is 10 minutes long. Each questioner gets two minutes for, for the answer, and that includes the question. Give me a second, let me just verify that. Each questioner will have two minutes. So let me take a look at the questions, Director Klein. Okay, we can take a few questions, Director Klein. Yeah? I'll read a question, and the time starts now, and I'll pause it and I'll stop it. 10 minutes. Question number one, given the reduced salary for teachers in the proposed budget, how many teacher redundancies did HCSB issue for the 2023-2024 school year? Do we have an answer, Director Klein, or do you want to defer this?
I think we'll defer this at this point.
Sorry. Yes. Superintendent Oldman. Superintendent Oldman.
Thank you, Chair, through you. The elementary panel experienced, there were issued 76 redundancy notices. And in the secondary panel, 42 redundancy notices were issued.
Thank you, Superintendent Oldman. Next question. How is HCSB going to ensure that redundancies do not continue to take place within the board in years to come? Do we want to answer this, Director Klein? Are we ready to answer, or are we not?
I think we could formulate a bit of an answer on that. Redundancies are, to a certain extent, the results of some forces that are beyond our control in terms of students and families that are in the region, and the, as one. I think what we'd want to do is, first of all, make sure that our accuracy in predicting the students' arrivals and their presence would be as carefully vetted as possible as we, as we go through each year. I think we would continue to work with all our partners and our board to ensure we're promoting what we have here in this region, that the Fulton Catholic District School Board has the best publicly funded education in this, in this region. Those are a couple that come, come to mind here, but I'm going to look over it. It is sort of a fiscal, financial, and HR issue as well.
Thank you, Director Klein. Two minutes left for this question. We move on to the next one. Okay, we have a next question. Director Klein is, have any of the Agatha Christie books or the books To Kill a Mockingbird been dislocated from any of our libraries for any reason besides being in bad repair? Do we have an answer to this, Director Klein?
Short answer is no. I don't have an answer on that. I'll look at Superintendent Crowell. It's one of my questions regarding the questions is in terms of definition of definition of it as, I guess, public operations. I'm not sure how too granular that is, Mr. or Superintendent Crowell.
Yeah, I wouldn't be able to answer that question, not to my knowledge, but I would want to offer a definitive answer. I am not aware of any books like To Kill a Mockingbird that have been pulled from school libraries, though.
Thank you, Director Klein. Thank you, Superintendent Crowell. Shall move on to next question. This question is regarding budget. What is behind the 583K increase more than doubling the salaries for department heads? What is the changing in staffing FTE from 2022, 2023 to 2023, 2024? Do we have an answer, Director Klein?
I don't think we have an answer at this point, no.
Superintendent Loft.
Through you, Mr. Chair, and Director Klein. We actually answered something similarly in the main session. It was a reallocation.
Okay, next question here, within the same two minutes slot. What is behind the 500,000 or 33% increase in directors and our supervisory officers' salaries and benefits? What is the FTE represented by these salaries, and how does it compare with 2022, 2023? Has it responded? Superintendent Loft.
That was a, sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, that's an in-camera item.
Thank you. Superintendent Loft, we can take another question here. How can this increase in senior-level administrative staff who are not directly supporting students be justified in a period of declining enrollment and disputed budget deficit? Same thing. Not sure what this is about. I think all these questions provided do not are in-camera items, so we'll move on to the next set of questions here. This one is the same as in-camera item. Here's the next question here. My question is as follows. I have never seen more division than now in our school communities. It seems to me as a taxpayer that they're keeping our public spaces neutral. For example, flags is a better solution for acceptance and unity of the people of our country. Example, flags is a better solution for acceptance and unity of the people of our country. The Canadian flag represents all of us and unites all of us together as one people under its banner. How does flying the pride flag for a month every year position under the Canadian flag on a school flag pole, which is against Canadian flag protocol? Bring more acceptance and unity to the school community. Director Klein, do we have any proposed answer?
You could begin to answer, and I invite any trustees who would care to assist with that as well. Because I think there's layers of it in terms of the history of the board and the resolution that was made here regarding that. I would, I would, and I'd invite any staff to help out with that, too. One of the things that caught my eye was is how would it bring acceptance and unity to the school community? Think the visible symbols do go a long way to promote acceptance and to promote inclusion. I think when there are, as there are, students and families and staff who would see that flag as something that would remind them that they are included, that they are of dignity and that they are part of a community and that they are valued and protected, I think that goes a long way to do it. Just as we have with all sorts of symbols. I'll see if there's anybody else who wants to. I know there was a resolution from the board that did, was the impetus for that, as it was at many other boards in this province. But is anybody else who wants to contribute to that answer? My time's up.
Thank you, Director Klein. Time is up on this one. Two minutes done. We have three minutes left of question time. Next question here. Next question here is on operating revenue, other revenues. What are the tuition fees listed and where do they come from? Are these related to international students or something entire, something else entirely? Superintendent Loft.
To you, Mr. Chair, it's actually international students. And just as a reminder, we talked about this a little earlier tonight. There is a reduction in our GSNs of all thirteen hundred per student as well. So that's the, what we're looking at here, that is the revenue from international students.
Next part of the same question is again, on operating revenue, school generated funds revenue. Was there, was this a bottom-up estimate that rolls up school level estimates? If not, how was this figure derived? There is, to support that, there is a material increase versus prior years, three point seven five million, which is forty-one percent. So looking for some additional context, speaking as a parent and a member of my children's parent's school council, I would have expected a reduction in these funds, if anything, given how many families are struggling with the increasing cost of living. It seems this increase is core to, to offsetting some of the increased expenses. So I'm trying to understand how realistic the projected amount is. So the question is, operating revenue, school generated fund revenue, was this a bottom-up estimate that rolls up school level estimates? If not, how was this figure derived?
To you, Mr. Chair, this figure actually doesn't impact our, our budget, our operating budget at all. As we've discussed tonight, earlier tonight, it's, school generated funds, we just have the exact same amount of revenue and expenses. It's net neutral to our budget, so it'll never, ever be part of our balancing of our budget. It's completely separate.
Thank you, Superintendent Loft. And another question here, and we have just ten seconds left. Expense, classroom instruction, what is the FTE reduction associated with the classroom teacher decrease? Superintendent Oldman, would you know, that's been lost. What is the FTE reduction associated with the classroom teacher decrease? Okay, question is answered, so two minutes over with this. There are three more questions here, but let's pass it on. We have one minute left on this, and the question here is, we all belong in our Catholic school signs at rapid schools, only mention specific forms of discrimination centered around sexual orientation and gender identity. This suggests that discrimination related to these certain groups is receiving preferential attention and is more significant and important than other forms of discrimination. Does the board have any intentions to replace these existing signs with ones where the wording is more inclusive to everyone facing discrimination? And that it's clear that all forms of discrimination deserves equal consideration, not just select groups, Director Klein, and there's forty seconds left.
Question is, does the board have any intentions to replace those signs? No, we don't.
Thank you, Director Klein. And with that, we shall end open question period. We shall now move on to the next order of business, in-camera items. We have to go back in camera. We need the motion to go back in camera. May I have someone move that we go back in camera?
I'll move it.
Trustee O'Hern Chanara moves. Looking for a second. Trustee Agnew, all in favor?
I'm opposed.
Yeah, I'll take it to a recorded vote. So this is in camera. Trustee Carabella, opposed. Trustee Powell. Trustee Kennedy.
Favor.
Trustee O'Hern Chanara.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew. Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee Saunders. Trustee Kelly.
In favor.
Trustee Duarte is in favor. Trustee Chua. Trustee Boy.
In favor.
Trustee Kuzma.
Favor.
We have seven in favor, two opposed. No abstention motion carries. We are going to move in camera. I'm going to say thank you to all our guests who are here. Thank you for coming. I really appreciate that and good night.
Can we have a?
Have a nice summer.
Short recess, like two minutes?
Yes, let's take a two-minute recess. We'd like to get.